And start the recording.
Okay.
Evening, everyone, and welcome to the Borough of Englewood Cliffs Mayor and Council Special Meeting. Today is March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one. It's approximately six thirty-four P. M. They call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, could I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Crandack?
Here.
Councilperson Wu?
Here.
Carol?
Here.
Park?
Yes.
Digo Goryo?
Here.
Sabari? Katrubis?
Here.
Borough Attorney Johnny?
Present.
Acting Borough Administrator?
Here.
And Municipal Clerk. Mayor, everyone is present except Councilwoman Sabari and Councilwoman Johnny and Johnny.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm having trouble hearing you. I think you said everyone was present except Councilwoman Sabari.
Correct.
The meeting was called to order. It is a virtual meeting conducted by a Zoom. So the public will have an opportunity to speak later on virtually. And we will continue. I look forward to the day when we could all meet in person again. Hopefully, that's not too far away from today. As we always begin our meetings, we do so with a flag salute, so please stand in the Fledge of Allegiance. Fledge of Allegiance.
Fledge of Allegiance, the flag, United States of America.
I hope everyone had a good Saint Patrick's Day yesterday. And I could also give the public before we go into closed session a nineteen pandemic update. The last positive case happened yesterday. And we have six active cases right now. We've had a total, historic total of three hundred and nine cases, and sadly, we've had eight deaths. So that's a recent death was added, and I'm not at liberty to say who it was. Condolences go out to all those families. Madam Clerk, would you please read into the record the Open Public Meetings Act statement?
This meeting has been duly advertised in accordance with the provisions of Chapter two thirty-one of the Public Laws of nineteen seventy-five, as known as the Open Public Meetings Act or the Sunshine Law. Notice of the two thousand twenty-one annual mayor and council meeting schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, posted on the Borough's website, posted on the outside doors of the Borough Municipal Building, since public access to such building is not allowed because of COVID nineteen, and other borough facilities were applicable and provided to all parties who have requested of such notice. Because of the COVID nineteen pandemic, this meeting is being conducted electronically via Zoom, pursuant to various executive orders promulgated by Governor Philip Murphy pursuant to the provisions of Public Law two thousand twenty, Chapter eleven, which allows for meetings to be conducted electronically and pursuant to various local finance notices, promulgated by the State of New Jersey Department Community Affairs Local Finance Board. Notice as to the Zoom access has also been provided according to law.
Okay, thank you very much. At this point on our agenda, which I should note is posted on the Borough website or should be posted on the Borough website, we will go into closed session in order to conduct some confidential business that we need to conduct. And in case the public wishes to speak, we will be back. I'm not sure exactly when and how long it'll take us in closed session, but you'll have an opportunity later on this evening in the public portion to speak, as I mentioned earlier as well. And for those of you who won't be with us later when we adjourn and who celebrate Passover, I wish everyone accordingly a happy Passover or good Passover. So with that said, have a motion to go into closed session. And for those of you who won't be with us later when we adjourn and who celebrate Passover, I wish everyone accordingly a happy Passover or good Passover. So with that said, have a motion to go into closed session.
Mayor, we have a motion in a second. May I read the? All in favor?
All right, they're all in favor?
All right.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. And I should also note on the record that I am going to turn the Chair of the meeting over to Council President Wu as I need to. I'll stay on phone, but I need to attend to something in the next hour. So, you know, when you rejoin us, Councilman Wu may be chairing the meeting and not me, but I'll still be present. We'll let you know.
There's the second Mario Crandack, Mayor. Is that you?
Yeah, that is me. I'm going in through my iPhone.
Okay.
I'll go in as soon as we go into closed session.
Okay. May I read the resolution?
Yes, please.
Whereas the Mayor and Council of the Borough of Englewood Cliffs has deemed it necessary to go into closed session to discuss certain confidential matters. And whereas the minutes of the closed session will remain confidential as permitted under the Open Public Meetings Act or shall be released when there is no further need for confidentiality as authorized by the Borough Attorney. Now therefore be resolved that the Mayor and Council of the Borough of Englewood Cliffs will go into closed session for the following matters as permitted under the Open Public Meetings Act and JSA ten colon four dash twelve. Penney litigation, COA affordable housing regarding Borough of Englewood Cliffs, eight hundred Sylvan Avenue LLC versus Borough of Englewood Cliffs, anticipate a litigation, Borough computer system.
Thank you.
Can I place the public back into the holding room?
Yes, please. And I'm going to join in through my iPhone.
Okay. We're ready.
Hey, hi. So this is the mayor. I had to switch over to my iPhone and take care of a family matter for my parents. So I'm turning over Chair of the meeting to Councilman, Council Borough President Wu. And Councilman Wu, would you please take over?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone, to our Mayor and Council meeting. Primary purpose tonight is to discuss our budget. Next on the agenda, just want, can I get a motion to open up to the public?
No. Council President, we need a motion to come out of closed session, please.
Okay. Apologize. Can I get a motion to come out of closed session?
I'm moved.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Next on the agenda, I'd like to open it up to the public, comments. Can I get a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
If anyone wishes to speak, if they could just do an emoji of raising your hand or waving, if we could see your picture, and we will unmute you. I don't see anyone. Do you? Everybody's muted, Lizette, from the public. No, they can do the icon. They can hear you? Okay. Yeah.
About the ones on the phone, Lizette, are they able to icon as well? I see four dialings.
I know the auditor is on. Paul, do you hear me? I see. He, you hear? Okay.
Chris is on as well. I just see four people dialed in. I believe those might be residents. I don't know if they're able, if you're able to unmute them for
I
to see if they have any comments.
Lizette?
Yes.
You can hear me, right?
Who's this?
Paul.
Yes, I can. But you're coming in through a picture and a phone.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is that all right?
Sure.
Okay.
Council President, I'm selecting unmute to the phones, and no one is speaking up.
If there's no one with any comments, I'd like to, can I get a motion to close the public portion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay, next on the agenda is Resolution eighty-nine, which is the authorization for the execution of the Developers Agreement with the Michaels Development Company, One LP for the development of a sixty-five unit municipally sponsored project replacing Resolution twenty-one dash eighty-three we had at our prior Mayor and Council meeting last week.
We need a motion?
I get a motion.
A move?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
You need a roll call. You get a roll call.
Can we have a roll call, Lizette?
Councilperson Wu?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Digo Goryo?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
Katrubis?
Yes.
It passes.
Next on the resolution list is Resolution ninety, authorize an emergency temporary appropriations to the two thousand twenty-one temporary budget for computer hardware and software and related matters. Can I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Can I get a second?
I'm sorry, it cut out. Who moved it?
Councilman Park and Councilman Katrubis second.
Thank you. Councilperson Wu?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Digo Goryo?
No.
Sabari?
Yes.
Katrubis?
Yes.
It passes.
Last on our agenda is our budget workshop. We had a previous workshop two weeks ago. The Finance Committee has had two meetings to discuss the budget for two thousand twenty-one. The Borough Administrator McMorro has worked hard on this, our auditor, as well as our CFO. I'll turn it over to the Administrator, and if she can give us a quick update. On my side, we finalized in the latest meeting the capital expenditures that DPW wanted to make for two thousand twenty-one. In prior years, the last two years, a lot of matters were neglected in the Borough. We know for a fact, DPW, there were not any roads, any money put towards roads last year. So we're trying to catch up on some of the things that we did not spend on the previous couple of years. The police budget, the police and DPW on the capital side are both at about a hundred and, police, I believe, is a hundred and fifty thousand, and DPW is at about a hundred and seventy thousand for capital. The total, big picture, the total tax levy increase is one point six nine percent from last year to this year. And, you know, I just wanted to turn it over to the entire Mayor and Council for discussion. I know last meeting we had in the Finance Committee, unfortunately, that meeting got cut short. And Councilman Digo Goryo, I think, had other matters to attend to. So today, we'd like to address any questions you may have.
Okay. I have a few, some of them the same as last, but I'll start with what you just said regarding no money being put toward roads. If you look at your summary of budget that we have, there, in fact, was plenty of money put in the budget for roads. And your budget this year is only about a hundred and thirty thousand more than ours last year, which is not substantial, is probably about ten percent. So there was money allocated toward roads in the previous years, and they always, it's always been allocated toward roads as anybody who's worked on the budget and prior to me would know, because it's always been there. It's something that we always allocate funds to every year. That's, that's my first comment, not a question. My second question is, again, that we still have a substantial amount of legal fees under the COA line item. We have one point eight million. So that in itself, based on what we were told by the auditor at the last workshop, would equate to about six hundred and forty-eight dollars a household in tax savings. So I'm still not sure. I know we have legal fees that we're going to incur for affordable housing, because we still, you know, have Mary Beth in London and everybody else. But those should be coming out of the COA fund. So I'm still complex as to why we have that much money on that particular line item. I think that we have to do more than sharpen our pencils there. That's one. We also have a substantial amount of money on the other legal line items, which I don't know how we've come to these calculations. At the last meeting, it was thrown at you, Mr. Wu, to explain the million eight and why that number, and then the five hundred and ninety thousand for other legal line items. So I think we still need to do a lot of work on reducing those line items and giving money back to the taxpayers. The, my other question was in regards to the LG tax revenue that came into surplus during two thousand and twenty. It was my understanding when we did the budget last year that we knew we had this money coming in. So although we had this additional expense of legal fees, we knew that we would have the offset this year, and we would be able to give back that million five, an additional tax, give or take, we didn't know what the number was going to be, but it was going to be substantial. And I don't understand why that isn't going back into the budget this year. Like, that in itself is another five hundred and forty dollars a household if it was to go back to the taxpayers. So I understand there are different line items here. It's kind of hard to tell with this budget, because the summary that we were given compares to budget numbers and not actual. The actual numbers for COA litigation last year were closer to two point one million, which this budget that we're looking at says one point eight. So things were taken from other line items and put into that line item. So it's really hard to look at a budget for two thousand twenty-one and understand why, what happened to this one point five million dollars in back real estate taxes that LG owed us? What happened with it? It should be sitting in surplus, because that's where I was told it would be. And I don't understand why we wouldn't be able to use it to reduce the tax burden this year to the taxpayers. It's very hard to follow this. I did ask today for numbers, and I did get actual numbers. I got the actual budgets. But it's seventy-four pages long, and it's not as easy to sit here and tell you where we had increases, where we had decreases. I'm sure we had decreases in the police, because we didn't bring them in till later in the year. So, but this budget, I would assume incorporates our new police officers and a full year of salaries, because it did go up, and rightfully so. That's what the intention was. I would imagine that overtime would have gone down, because now we have a bigger police force. It's very hard to tell, but I do know that, you know, just looking at two line items, which is the one point eight in COA legal fees and the million five that should be sitting in surplus, we should be giving back a lot more to the taxpayers than a hundred and nine dollars per household. And I would like, you know, listen, it doesn't have to happen tonight, because of course, you know, it takes them looking into. But we really need to spend more time looking at those two line items and trying to figure out why, when, you know, last year, we knew that we had all this additional money coming in, that we would not have an increase, and we would have a substantial decrease. So I'm a little confused as to why we don't have a substantial decrease.
Councilman Wu, you had turned it over to me and
Borough Administrator McMorro, I could turn it over to you.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, so while I will, I made notes of what Councilwoman Sabari said. I'm going to disagree with her on almost, on most levels. Um, I want to start from the beginning. Just to bring the public up to date on where we are, this is the second budget workshop. We had two budget meetings with the Finance Committee. The second one was, unfortunately, in my opinion, of forty-five minutes where we got nowhere. And it's very hard, and Councilman Sabari, I happen to agree with you. The purpose of having a Finance Committee is for the three members to meet, and they're supposed to communicate, collaborate, discuss what their thoughts are, questions are, and that didn't happen. I'll let the three members of the Finance Committee explain further if they choose to, what took place during that meeting, but in my opinion, it was a total waste of time. That being said, I can answer most of your questions. And I think we need to start with, and I'm sure you didn't mean to inaccurately state to the public that you put money into roads in the two thousand twenty ordinance. I don't have that copy, Councilwoman. I have the ordinances right here. And the last ordinance that you put money in for roads was in two thousand nineteen dash eleven for the Riverside Co-op. You did put money in that year. Last year, you put no money into roads that the CFO gave me a copy of, and you didn't do any roads last year, and that's confirmed by the DPW Superintendent and the engineer. So it must be
No, no, no. I just want to understand before we move on to the next one, Carol. Is that I'm looking at a summary that I got from you, which shows me. So if you're saying that the budgeted numbers that are in here for roads and repairs is incorrect, then you're right. Then maybe I'm wrong.
I need to, I just, I would really just appreciate if I could, because you were the Finance Chair, and you know you did not do roads last. You don't need to be looking at a piece of paper.
I am telling you that on the sheet.
I can't, I need to be able to give my report in full.
No, I know you want to act and play politics, but it's on the sheet you sent out.
Councilwoman, I am not
No, I'm going to let you. Go ahead, Carol. Go ahead.
But I
Go ahead.
I let you speak.
You're right. Go ahead. I will, I will speak.
I'm going to correct your misstatements. And I actually, you probably didn't realize what you stated. That was what I said. So let's not play
I'm basing it on documents I have from you.
Okay. Well, when you ask for something, three hours before a meeting or five hours before a meeting, when you've got five weeks to answer for
Summary.
And there's only myself and Lizette in the entire Borough Hall working, putting things together, because nobody's not sick. I think it's really unreasonable. We're doing the best we can. That being said
You're smarter than that. I know you are. But go ahead.
Councilman Wu, may I continue?
Yes, please, Councilwoman Sabari, if you could just let the Borough Administrator finish.
Okay, well, she needs to
She represents
You had a long list of questions, and let's let her
There were statements, actually.
Statements.
Okay, well, they were misstatements. And Council members, there were no roads done in the year two thousand twenty. There was, there were no monies put aside for roads in the year two thousand twenty. There was no money put aside for capital improvements in the year two thousand twenty. And what all of you need to look at is, this Borough, look at it as if it's a home. It's a house. And every year on your house, you make some types of improvements, because you can't just abandon your house. When you do, it's neglectful, and things start to break. And when they break, they usually cost you more money, which is, I know, Councilwoman Sabari thinks this is very funny. This is not funny at all.
Now let her finish, David.
I'm just saying what I saw with my own eyes.
Are we done?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Our computer infrastructure needs repair. Our buildings need repair. Our roads need repair. Every element and portion in capital needs repair, and you need to invest in that. And that is why, if Councilman Digo Goryo had stated at that last Budget Committee meeting, we tried to explain the monies that were being invested into capital and the breakdown. That being said, I can tell you right now
I never received any actual figures. I can't really be useful in the budget meeting without having actual figures. There are no actual figures. And, you know, I like to see bar graphs. I like to see what we actually spend. And I did, I'm new at this, but, I mean, when I'm handed a piece of paper showing what, you know, what people want, how can I be, you know, being fair to the taxpayers? I need to have hard numbers. I think anyone does when they, you know, when they're doing a budget. And I didn't see any of that being given to me before those meetings.
Um, we all know that that's not true, but I'll let Councilman Katrubis and Councilman Wu to speak on that. Um, as for the roads, portions of the money that need to be put aside for capital, you, we have a three hundred thousand dollar Riverside Cooperative Program that we need to put money aside for. We have Summit Street, and even though there is a reimbursement to the grant, which we almost lost due to the fact that the last two years were not, the dates were not being respected as they should have, and we only found out last Friday at eleven o'clock, twelve o'clock on Friday was the deadline that we were not going to lose the grant. I thank Andy Hippel and his whole team for ensuring that taxpayers did not lose the two hundred, two thousand dollar grant that they had been awarded. So we're going to get that reimbursed, but we need to have the two fifty in the budget to, um, to make sure that we can utilize that. We also have money in the capital for the Fifth Street Design Portion and Assessment Ordinance if the Council decides that they want to recontinue with that project that had been dropped off in the beginning of two thousand nineteen. So that's for, that's just for the roads, that portion that we're talking about. Then we have, for the Police Department, we had about a hundred and fifty in capital, sorry, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in capital requests for the police. We have approximately a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of capital improvements from the DPW. We had put aside, my recommendation was to put aside two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the computer infrastructure due to the subject matter that we discussed in closed session and the position the Borough finds itself in due to no fault of its own. We have other projects that the Council brought up at the last meetings, both at the committee meeting and at the public meeting, which was improvements at Witty Field with lights, which would be approximately a one point three million dollar expenditure to clean up the parks with, if you want a dog park, and you want lights, and you want to invest in other parts of the park to upgrade it. A lot of the money is going into capital. That's the start. The next thing is that we're all aware that there's, there's only a few people working in Borough Hall, and there's more staffing that's required. You don't have a rect director. You fired your rect director in the beginning of two thousand nineteen, and you never replaced the rect director. You've been asked to bring in another full-time finance person. You did not do that. There are positions within Borough Hall that you did not fill, so, you know, it's great to show that you have a lower budget, but you're stripping the Borough down to a point that it's becoming inoperable to serve its residents. And the residents deserve better than that. And the residents deserve better than that. They deserve to get services for what they're paying for. But. It, it, it costs money to provide services and you need to spend it. And I agree, you need to spend it wisely, but you need to spend it. Okay, stripping a borough down to a point where it's inoperable is not serving the residents. So I can only make recommendations. I can tell you where your shortfalls are. I could tell you where you need to make your improvements. I could tell you. How you need to, um, what areas you need to look at. At the end of the day, I don't get to vote. You do. But you also need to understand by stripping it down, at some point, it can break to a point that it's going to cost you double than what you thought you were saving. Um, as for the lawyers, I think that, I think that the bigger issues for all of you to discuss tonight. Is all of the capital issues, your staffing issues, um, you know. And get through that because that's, that's a major part of um, of what you're, of what you're bringing up. As for refunds to the taxpayers, everybody would love a refund to the taxpayers. Chris Pitaglia had certain recommendations. I followed his recommendations on, on how to um fund certain things. I let him speak for himself. But I, I really think you need to um look at how to get the borough. Back in investing in um, in your residents and, and giving them the provisions that uh, that they expect, you know, and deserve.
Can I respond?
Any questions anybody has?
I have questions in, in response to what you just said.
Sure.
All, all these capital items that you're referring to, do we know exactly how much that adds to the budget? Are these all items that will be five percent?
Those are all, yeah, they're, well, all those things I brought up are, are in that capital line.
Okay, so they're in, they're in the capital line item. So how much actually does that equate to this five?
I just read it off to you. Somebody should, I just, I just read every one of them up. You want to do it again? We'll do it again.
Okay, so this, that, those line items will cost the taxpayers five percent and, you know, I, I have to work off a summary sheet that I have. Cause that's what I have at the moment.
I think Chris, Chris did send out. Same thing I have you.
Alright, the summary of budgets, right?
I mean, some of the things we actually have no control over, like the Riverside Cooperative, unless the council does not want to do roads again this year, but roads.
You know, last year, Carol, PSCNG did a substantial amount of our roads at no cost to the taxpayers.
Those weren't roads. Those were just fixing the roads that they.
No, they actually, they actually do it. Same thing.
We did, we did the same thing. We've always had PSA and G fix roads because they have to, but that's not, we, we have. Yeah, I mean, Mark Neville, if you want to bring him.
They, they had done.
I'm sorry, there's a kickback.
The road right in back of me, Alyssa, was done and that was fully done.
You know, of, of course, Carol, I'm not for not doing roads, but the expense of doing it at the five percent, I'd just like to know what that is. Like, you know, like I just said to you, there's a lot of money that I would have expected would have been going back. And if you're saying that the choice here that we're making or that we'll be voting on. Is instead of to give it back, it's going to go toward these things. Now you have to remember, we had no room in our budget last year. Because we did have a litigation going on that cost not one point eight million, but two point one million. So, you know, that line item now says one point eight was the prior budget, but the reality was is that the actual was two point one. You know, as far as the rec director, there were no rec programs going on during COVID, so we didn't have anybody in there.
This is the year before you did.
Let me, you have to let me finish.
But make, but make direct statements. Don't make statements.
So, no, we didn't have him there and I'm not going to get into performance either because I can't do that legally. But for whatever reason, there was COVID and there were a lot of rec programs that didn't continue. Whether right or wrong, do we need a rec director, part-time? Probably. I don't know what the number is in this budget for that rec director. I know we talked about a fi, somebody to help plan us in finance. And that should be in the budget. I know we hired new police officers. That's in the budget. That's, none of that really still answers the question, which is really quite simple, right? Is that you have a million five in surplus from previous year's budget. For the tax money that came in from LG. And I'm saying, give or take, Carol, don't hold me to the exact number. I don't know exactly what came in. I know that most of it should have come into the borough. I don't believe the county or the schools got any of that. Just like they, we don't get any help from them when we have to give back on, on real estate tax abatements. So my assumption is, is that whatever came in is all ours. Um, I could be wrong, maybe give or take a few dollars. It wasn't a million five. But there should be this additional million five in surplus and there's this million eight in legal fees. So those two in themselves shouldn't really be offsetting anything else because we have another million five coming in. To the tax revenue end of the budget, right? Because now we have LG on board. So the assessed values have gone up and we have this additional money coming in. So yes, I'm not going to sit here and argue, you know, was this done? Was that done? Okay, whether it was done or not done, we couldn't have done any more than we did because we had already maxed out on our budget.
So all I'm saying is we need to get back on track to.
And I agree.
That, that's all I'm saying. I.
I'm not arguing.
Leave those two items.
You're cutting me off.
And I'm not saying they're not legitimate items that you would like to speak about. I don't know that it's a full one point five. I don't know that we get to keep it all. I'll let. Chris and Paul speak. All those points, most importantly here to me. To be as efficient as we can with everyone's time tonight, and that's, I'm sure we all want to be efficient. Let's get through all the other items, the small items.
Okay. I really can't give you any input into that because although I chaired and there was no committee last year, there was just me. Okay, so there's a committee and everybody on this council, knowing. That I chaired and did most of the work myself last year, chose not to put me on that committee, but expects me to have some reasonable input. How is that even possible? Most of this stuff makes no sense because it's not presented properly. We're looking at budgets to budget. That's not the way it's done. It should be actuals for the past two years and then a budget.
So I'll let Chris Pitaglia speak to why he's not doing that. I mean, I can't.
About that, the reality is there's two numbers I'm talking about that have a huge impact on this year's.
The mayor's saying that he's muted again.
Okay, so again, you can let Chris speak to this or um, I'm sorry, I forget the auditor's name. Um, but Chris, Paul, I'm sorry, Paul. You know, I know at the last budget workshop, um, there was an insinuation that there may be all of this money due to police officers for packages if they retire. But most of the big packages have already happened. They're already out there. They're in this budget. And they're in this budget as an emergency appropriation, but they were last year and I got a lot of grief for that, but they're in this budget the same way. So there aren't that many officers that we need to be concerned about to hold all this money in surplus. That we might have to pay out because the truth is, if we had to pay it out, it would be an emergency appropriation.
Actually, the, actually, in, in, in everybody's defense here, there was one that you knew about and you didn't put it in yours last year and you pushed it off to the following year. And that's, that's Captain McDermott. And you should have done it the right way because the resolution in November was on the agenda, but you pulled it off. Excuse me, and you should have put it in your special emergency in December because you knew about it. So I'm not here to call you out, so don't. I appreciate, but.
No, you're wrong.
I'm not wrong. I'm absolutely not wrong. I don't make statements unless I know I'm actually.
Borough Council President Woo, uh, if I could have the floor for a few seconds, please.
Or Mayor Crancheck.
Thank you. So, so what I'm really hearing here tonight is that when Debbie Sabari. And her fellow travelers are spending money on their own friends, like Al Wunsch and the other lawyers.
Oh, come on, Mario.
Let me finish. I have the floor. Then, then it's okay. But when we want to spend money, no, no, let me have the floor. Councilman Woo, can you mute her, please? But when we want to spend money to benefit the residents and our children in town and our seniors and our police officers, she has an issue with that.
We can do both, Mario.
Do not interrupt me because I did not interrupt you. Now, if, if you had any level of professionalism, you would not be interrupting me, but you don't, so you do. So let me finish and then you could have the floor again and continue down the path of all your lies and all your misrepresentations, okay? That is what it comes down to. If you're paying a million eight to Al Wunsch and his cronies.
We didn't pay a million eight.
That's so, that's okay. But if we want to spend money on a better park, on better roads. Can you stop interrupting me, please? If we want to spend money to help our residents, then you have a major issue with it because now you're all stewards of the financial person in town.
Now you're politicking.
Enough.
That is not my thing.
I, I am just, I am just being his parent and educating our public as to what you really are, okay?
You don't want to believe that.
Thank you, Councilman Woo. And for the record, I did not interrupt you, but you continue to interrupt me because somehow. Because somehow you think.
You can do both.
The floor. Somehow you think that this is going to actually make your position more credible. But in fact, the very fact that you're interrupting me. The very fact that you have to interrupt me means that you are completely wrong. You know you're wrong and you continue to lie. Thank you, Councilman Woo. I appreciate it.
All I know is that Mario Cranjack, Mario Cranjack cost this town four point five million dollars minimum.
Okay, so explain that to us, De Gregorio.
Explain that to me, Mr. De Gregorio, since you're on the finance.
Explain that to us.
Explain to me where Mario Cranjack spent four and a half million dollars because that's a pretty big number.
Explain that, Mr. De Gregorio, with real facts, not your made-up facts.
Yeah, yeah.
Go ahead.
I'd like to pause after every line item, so you.
I can do it in one line.
Explanation of what it is.
It started with Mario Cranjack's planning board denying eight hundred Sullivan for corporate headquarters. And from there on, it.
Excuse me, Mr. De Gregorio, how does that, how does that translate into a line item?
Litigation, litigation fees.
The legal fees, sir, the legal fees, sir. We, the, the public is well aware of the legal fees, okay? You paid attorneys last year, Mr. Sabari, one point eight million dollars.
It was two point one. Get your numbers straight.
Yeah, I, I have my numbers straight. I, my numbers. Okay, okay, Mr. Sabari. So you spent more on, on your attorneys, okay?
Yeah, because we had to.
Yeah, you didn't have to pay Albert Wunsch. You didn't have to pay him. You brought him as a negotiator so he can sell the town up the river, okay?
Albert Wunsch got a.
Half a million dollars, half a million dollars.
And the litigation went on at the two thousand nineteen of Mario Cranjack at his, at his crowd.
Very simple.
From there.
There's no reason, there, there is no reason.
And it's cost the public dearly, dearly.
We understand that it's cost the public dearly, sir.
One person at a time, please, one person.
We understand that it's cost the public, sure. And that's the reason why we're in office, so we can come here and clean up this mess.
Well, you campaigned for office against, against all of this high-density housing and now you've really turned on a dime. Isn't it amazing how you lied to the public to get elected?
Explain that, please.
You lied to the public to get elected.
Explain what the lie.
To the public.
What's the lie?
You said. Yep.
You couldn't. It's the law.
And the sooner the public recognizes the lies of you and Mr. Cranjack and the rest of them. The better off this town will be. And the improvements that Ms. McMorro has indicated. Would be just a little bit of a fraction of the money that we, we wasted on all this litigation.
Let me.
Because of, because of our mayor's emotions.
Are you finished?
Not logical. He's emotional.
Are you fine?
He acted from emotion, just like you're doing now. You're reacting on emotion.
May, may, may I please speak now?
Sure.
Okay, for whatever reason, right, our attorneys are not turning over communications, okay? Don't you want to?
There's nothing to do with it.
Excuse me, sir, I'm not, I'm not finished. Don't, don't you, this, the public, the public should be very, very concerned. With the way the previous administration has been running Borough Hall, okay? So don't you want to leave any money in the budget to keep people from, uh, i- is that why? Because you don't want to keep people from finding out what has really happened?
All I know is I would have been two thousand dollars.
Hold on a second, sir. Do you think that it's a coincidence that Albert Wunsch has turned over zero communications?
There's nothing to do with it. You divert it.
Don't interrupt me.
That's actually litigation and you, for what you say in public, Mr. Katurbas.
I, 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 I'm very.
You had said to all of us in closed session.
Why don't you leave? Why don't you leave me?
Be careful.
What I need to speak to the public for. Do you think that it's a coincidence that Albert Wunsch has turned over no emails? This is borough property now.
I'm not sure what he's turned over. You're suing him.
Oh, okay. Or do you think it's a coincidence? That's because you're lying right now. Do you think that it's?
I'm not lying.
That Mr. Marianello, the previous borough attorney, uh, turned over zero documents, zero emails?
I don't know what he turned over.
Okay, well, I, I think again, you're lying to the public.
All I can see is.
I'm not finished. I'm not finished, sir.
On your campaign sites.
I'm not finished, sir. Okay, do you think that it's a coincidence that Mr. Serenian did not turn over any emails? And, and now all of a sudden, all, all of a sudden you have this huge problem with IT, okay? That needs to be resolved.
We're not allowed to talk about it. That was closed session. Watch what you say.
There's. Okay.
You gotta keep, you gotta zip it.
Oh, no, 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 wait. The public, rest assured, the public. Soon enough, the public is going to find out.
Oh, my God, I can't wait.
When they find out, they're going to be very.
They find out how much money you guys are spending.
They find out, they're going to be very alarmed. I know I would be alarmed if it was my house and I found out things like that happening in my home, okay?
They're going to throw all you guys out.
So continue with your lies to the public, sir. Continue with your emails. It's nothing to blame.
It will come out.
Pretty soon, it's going to, it will come out. It will come out, Mr. Sabari. It will come out.
It will. I know it and it's not going to be an issue.
And then, and then I'm going to see, and then I'm going to see what more lies you're going to continue with.
Where would you like to save money in the budget to hold aside for whatever it is you're talking about?
Let's pivot, let's pivot from the conversation, right? Okay, no problem.
A million eight, a million eight in legal fees? Why aren't we reducing that line item? Pick one line item. Okay, this budget.
I can answer that.
Covers all the things that you would like to say.
I can answer that. You, you asked a question. I can answer it. We had, we had a meeting. We had a meeting and it was your precious Mr. De Gregorio, who was very disruptive, did not want to answer any questions, did want, did, eh, eh, eh. Basically ended the meeting. So we tried to get to that, excuse me, we tried to get to that line item, but Mr. De Gregorio did not allow us to and we ran out of time. That's it. It's a simple answer.
So in other words, you.
In the meantime, in the meantime. I'm not finished, so please don't interrupt me. In the meantime, we have solved all the other problems with DPW.
What problems? We're not problems.
Okay, well, we solved the capital expenditure issues, okay? We solved with the police department.
Not solving anything.
Stop jumping in. I don't understand why you need to, you, you, you asked for an answer to your questions and I'm trying to give it to you.
I asked to answer one question. Why?
You don't like my answers is the problem. That's, that's what the issue here is, but that's okay.
You're blaming Dave? You're blaming David?
David disrupted the meeting. You weren't even there, so why don't you let, why don't you please let Mr. De Gregorio speak? We don't need to hear from you. He was there, Councilman, Councilman President.
David is not finance. He doesn't even understand that.
Why is he on the committee?
You put him on there just to have one more badger. That's it.
What's going on here? I mean, why, why is he even on the committee at that point? Why does it, why doesn't David?
Why? Because you guys put him there. You put him there. You should have.
I requested early on to be on another committee. I requested to be on the committee of my, that where I feel like.
The public should be very alarmed. The public should be, you, you should be, you should be extremely concerned with the way that you have been fiscally irresponsible.
Concerned about somebody.
Fiscally irresponsible with its finances for the past two years, okay?
Yeah.
That's, 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 that's the answer.
All legal fees. Mr. Woo, you said to me at the last meeting that you would sharpen your pencil on the legal fees and it's still one point eight.
We held a meeting last week. Councilman De Gregorio.
Are you going to blame David?
Test to this. Um, we asked everyone to just have their cameras on so we can have a, you know, meeting where we can see what everyone's doing. Um, Councilman De Gregorio refused to turn on his camera. Um, we asked for comments. The only comments were in relation to the dog park. Um, I asked Councilman De Gregorio how much he thought the town would, should invest in a dog park. He had a number, but that was the only input that we had. So it's just not productive when.
We went through every line item. He refused to give input that we could work with. He refused to say what further information. He needed, what he wanted. He just said, I'm reserving all rights and he would talk to us. That's not productive.
Are you really going to blame David for this budget still having one point eight? Are you really going to blame David for this budget still having one point eight million?
May I please speak to that?
Why are we stuck on the one point eight?
May I please speak to that tomorrow?
It equates to five hundred and forty thousand dollars for the taxpayers, so yes, we're still talking about it.
Yeah, okay, may I please speak to that? It's March, okay? It's March, and we have accomplished more in the past two months than you have, your, your, your administration in the past two years. That's just.
It doesn't, that does not.
Yes, it does. Yes, it does. We've accomplished a lot of things and we, and.
The past year was, we capped out on our budget because of legal fees. So, honestly, I wish we could have done more, but we couldn't because we were confronting our obligation to the state to provide affordable housing.
There's, there's legal fees.
You're not, you could have cut a half a million dollars from Albert Wunsch and you would have had a half a million dollars.
There's a lot of legal fees right now, Mr. Barry, okay?
David D. Gregorio for not participating in a meeting. I don't know why he didn't participate. Maybe he didn't feel like he was offering anything. I don't know. Maybe he didn't want to discuss it. He was reserving his rights. I don't know. But that does not answer the question. There is a one point eight million dollar line item, and there's also another five hundred and ninety thousand. I haven't even touched on that.
How much, I, I'm.
I, I'd like to.
How much do you feel we should have? I would like to hear her input. How much money, given the litigation that you know is going on right now, but in closed session discussions, how much money do you feel?
On the COA line?
On everything. No, on, on everything. I'm asking you on. No, they're not separate, ma'am.
They are separate. There's a separate line item for five hundred and ninety thousand.
Albert Wunsch got a half a million dollars last year that was in the litigation line.
That dropped to half a million dollars since the mayor's last statement.
He did not.
He was instrumental in settling this lawsuit. So, you may not agree with me, and like I've said.
I do not, I do not agree with you. I know his resume and I know his background. I don't agree.
That has nothing to do with your budget.
But you made it, you made a statement about money, and as administrator, I'm responding to you. You had a half a million, excuse me, Councilwoman. You had three lawyers, you had three lawyers that you paid, you said your hands were tied.
About my opinion.
You could have gotten, you could have gotten the same result with two. It's not like the result you got is something that I would be very proud of at this point.
I don't know about that.
I don't. I think, I think what we accomplished with the Michaels is something to be very proud of, and that didn't happen with anything.
I know, you know, I know what happened at the last meeting. I, I want you to take credit for everything.
I don't want to take everything.
Credit for everything.
But I will, I, it's my job to clean up the mess that you left.
I have no.
My job, and I'm going to do it.
As the borough administrator, how dare you? You're political, okay?
I'm not getting political. I am stating a fact.
Allowed to say that you're cleaning up my mess, because let me tell you something.
What I, no, do not just call me.
I'd like to say, we're cleaning up your mess, Mr. Barry.
I said, I, what I stated was.
This is your mess. We're cleaning it up.
So, you better.
Ms. McMurro, it's okay.
Check yourself. You shouldn't even be in that.
I'll say, I'll say, we are cleaning up your mess. That's exactly what's going on here.
You have no idea. You're, you're such.
I'm what?
I'm not even going to talk to you.
Thank you.
Ms. McMurro, you asked me what I thought should be in that line item?
Yes, please. I want to hear what you have to say.
That based on settlement, there should be very little in that line item. Okay, what should be in that line item is you can put a few dollars in there, but the truth is, is that all the current legal fees should be coming out of the COA fund, not out of that line item. So, I would look.
Well, we can agree to disagree on that, but that's, I don't, I don't agree with you. From a financial standpoint, I'm just saying I don't agree with you. I don't believe that it's prudent.
I would double check that because.
But, but.
Reality, and.
That, that could be very problematic for the borough, and I would not.
You can put three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand, but a million eight? Explain the million eight. How do you come up with that?
Explain that. I can explain it. I can, I can explain it. I think I just explained it before. We didn't have an opportunity to get to it in the last meeting.
Right, exactly.
We tried to get to it. That was actually the very next thing. That was actually the very. Hold on a second. That was actually the very next thing that we were supposed to discuss.
That's right.
Yeah, I don't even believe that.
Crazy.
Oh, that is true. That is true.
Okay, so are you telling me then, Mr. Katrubis and Mr. Wu, that at the last budget workshop, you said you're chopping your pencils? It didn't happen because of David. Go ahead and blame it on, on David. So, are you going to go back now and sharpen your pencils before we finalize a budget?
It's March, Ms. Barry. I don't understand what your issue is, okay? This is not final, nothing.
I was recommending.
Is that the answer?
What, what, you didn't bring.
Is that the answer?
Excuse me, you didn't bring any numbers to this council till May last year? What, what is it that you're?
Yeah, and.
What I really believe for the public, I really believe Ms. Barry is a dog whistle for people that are listening on this call right now. And they're looking for any excuse.
What is a dog whistle?
Fuck, Google it.
What do you mean?
Just Google it. Google it.
If you're out there saying it.
For people that.
Why don't, why don't you say what it is that you're accusing?
I don't have to say what it is. I, I, I said what it is. You're a dog whistle for people.
You want to, you want to accuse me of something?
I, I, I don't think that I can be any more.
Be a man and say it.
I, I don't think that I can be any more clear.
You're weak. I don't even know how you got elected.
Everybody knows.
So, in other words, for the public's interest, I'm not going to let go of this, and I'm going to bring it up at the next workshop.
That's good. You should, you should.
Thank you.
I, I, I did ask for, I did, I did not get a, I did not get an answer that I can work with yet. I asked for, given all the litigation that you are aware of presently, and it's not just COA. There are other items that we've discussed.
That's another line item.
There are, no, no, it's not. No, 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 no.
No, in closed session, we discussed some.
We just discussed certain things. I'm not going to talk about it right now.
By.
How much money?
Honestly, if you give me a breakdown by lawsuit, because remember, those that are covered by the JIF, we have a deductible.
They're not, these are not covered by.
So, if they're not covered by the JIF, then we need to look at what you're budgeting for that. I don't know. I'm not part of that committee.
Right, okay, so all we're trying to get is feedback from the council. All we're trying to do tonight is to get.
And that is a separate line item, Carol. The COA line item for litigation is separate. You have another five hundred and ninety thousand in other litigation.
I am very well aware of.
Okay, and I know you are.
Okay.
I know that you are.
I, I am, okay, okay, and so are you, so I, I would appreciate if we just speak back to the public because it's not there.
That I know what I'm talking about, too.
I know, but, but let's just take the misstatements out and just let's speak factual. That's all I'm asking for, okay? Nothing more than that.
It need to be looked into further.
And no one, Ms. Barry, no one said that they're not going to be looked in further. We're trying to get feedback from everyone instead of playing these games.
I will accept that. I will accept that as an answer, that it's still being looked into.
Thank you.
Instead of an old, you know, spiel about everything that's in the budget.
And we figure out the capital line items and things that could benefit the public. Okay, so please, I, I would greatly appreciate it because I need to get back.
Can we take the borough administrator's suggestion and let's talk about the non-legal fee matters? And let's, let's cover capital. She had mentioned a hundred and fifty thousand for the police um, in terms of capital improvements. Uh, the finance committee, I believe all three of us were.
No, not Councilman D. Gregorio refused to comment.
So, that one fifty is seventy five hundred dollars, right? It's five percent.
That's correct, yes.
And item number, item number one, just to give you an update, because the chief did call me again on this. He apologized. He thought it was a different number than what it was. Okay, so on item number one, which is the establish the mandated body worn cameras, we were taking, he, he thought it was, um, he got an estimate of about fifteen thousand dollars. He has since found out from his latest meeting that it's going to be about forty one thousand, but it gets to be paid over a three year time period. So, for year one, we're fine with a little bit left over if we take it from capital ordinance seventeen dash oh six. For year two and year three, we're going to have to, uh, fund the other portions, uh.
Borough administrator, I recall, I recall the chief saying that was a mandate from the state.
Yes, yes, that's a mandate, yes.
Something that is optional, so.
Didn't we do this last year?
No.
Body armor?
No, no. It was on there for a request, but it was not taken, it was not addressed. This year, his deadline, he's got a deadline by June. He must address it. It was on his wish list last year, but it was not, not addressed.
Fifty is one seventy five now, right, with an additional twenty five for that item, correct, Borough Administrator?
Uh, yes, but the additional twenty five will be in budget year twenty two and budget year twenty three. We don't have to worry about that now. So, item number one, I've, I've found the funds for that, no cost to the taxpayers out of the capital ordinance. Items two, three, four, and five, and anybody doesn't have their papers in front of them, I could read them to you again. That's helpful, okay?
If you could, thank you.
I, you want me to read it or no?
Yes, please.
Okay, no problem. So, okay, so item number two is to expand the surveillance camera program to include the additional borough properties, parks, intersections, and um, to also implement an automatic license plate reader, ALPR program. It's approximately seventy five thousand dollars in state contract. Um, item number three, one police vehicle estimated at forty five thousand. The chief has implemented a program where every year he tries to get one car so that, oh.
Yeah, the F O heads his hand up, um.
Do you want, do you need to jump in or?
Unmute him. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, I just wanted to jump. I'm not sure about the, with the body worn cameras. Are we, are we purchasing forty one thousand dollars of cameras this year and paying it off over three years? Or are we only purchasing, uh, one third of the cameras this year, one third next year, and one third the following year?
Uh, he was not clear on that, but I, I'll ask him.
Okay, just, just as a note, if we are purchasing the full forty one thousand dollars worth of cameras in this year, we do need the appropriation for the forty one thousand dollars before we can award.
I will let, we've got twenty one, Chris, in there, so we're only do twenty more, but I will find out and make a note of that. Uh, he wasn't clear. He, it kind of sounded like he was only buying, I don't know, you know what? But it's a very good point that you're bringing up, and I will make sure that I ask him.
Excellent, thank you. That was it.
Thanks, Chris, for bringing that up. Um, hold on, guys. Okay, um, so you got item number two. Uh, item number three is the car, and like I said, the chief is putting a program together with, where, uh, every year he'll purchase one car, and then they're going to auction the, the car that they're replacing off. Um, item number four is replacing the Harley Davidson motorcycle. It's approximately twenty thousand dollars. The current one they're using is a twenty ten, and they already had a failure with, I believe it was with, um, with the brake once. Councilman Wu, was that what he explained to us?
Correct, yeah, the, um, new ones have anti-lock braking systems, so.
Correct, okay. And item five is purchase new level four ceramic body armor for all officers. It's approximately ten thousand dollars. The last purchase was in two thousand and fifteen, and the recommended is to be replaced every five years. So, um, the paper shows one sixty five. That included the fifteen he put towards the body camera. Um, if, if he's incorrect and he needs to purchase them all this year, there, instead of the one fifty, it would be an additional twenty thousand dollars, Councilman Wu, because, uh, he said it was approximately forty. It might come in a little cheaper than that. I know he was shopping around, but I could, I could get that number tightened up and get back to everyone. But that's worst case scenario. Which, an additional twenty thousand is five percent is what is it? Thousand dollars?
Thousand dollars, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so that's where it's over. So, that's what the police is asking for. And, and Councilman Savari, the police budget really, um, last year was two ninety six, two fifty, um, that, that they requested, they expended two eighty six, two eighty, and he's asking for two ninety five, fifty. He pretty much stayed right in line with his overtime that he requested, and he's requesting the same amount again. He didn't go over on his request, but he is requesting the same amount.
Okay, the, um, twenty thousand for the motorcycle?
Yes.
Is that, I, I know that the, um, police vehicles aren't covered unless they're SUVs under the capital program. So, the twenty thousand, will that be covered and be only five percent, or will we be expending the twenty thousand?
I was told that, Chris, can you confirm that? I was told that, that the motorcycle would be covered.
I, I believe that's the case. Uh, I will verify that with, uh, Ron Council.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, the total, what is the total police budget? I'm sorry, now.
Well, you know, it, it's going to go between best scenario, one fifty, worst scenario, one seventy.
Okay, so we're not talking any substantial money in the budget for that? No. We'll be benefiting by these items, okay?
Absolutely, and, and everything else in his budget is pretty much in line. It was a seven thousand dollar difference from what was expended to what they're requesting again, uh, this year. Ms. Duffy, I believe the mayor, uh, dropped off and is coming back in. If you could unmute him, please.
We're talking eighty five hundred bucks.
Yeah, I mean, it, for what they're asking, it's really, um, I think it would be a good investment and, you know.
I don't disagree.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it, and I'll get back to everybody about the purchase of body worn cameras, if they're all at once or not, and if we can get a better price on it. I know he was shopping that around. Um, while we're on the subject and something with capital is the phones. And again, um, I have a meeting with the chief. We're trying to do it today for nine one one, couldn't make it happen. It's either going to happen tomorrow or Monday or Tuesday of next week. And as I told everyone, the ranges on the nine one one, which is going to be where you're getting the biggest cost, is anywhere from ninety to two fifty. Um, the, the police have someone dedicated from the department that's working with the, with the chief of police. They're going to make them the presentation to me, and then I will bring them in to make the presentation to you. Um, just trying to use everybody's time as efficiently as possible. Um, and then separately, I'm, I'm investigating the other, uh, companies that you tasked me with to, to look into and get you, uh, the answers.
So, the phone, so phone replacements, you're talking ninety thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand?
Just for, just for nine one one.
Just, just for the police department?
Just, no, just for the nine one one portion of the police department.
Oh, wow, that seems like a large number, but I don't.
Yeah, two fifty is, two fifty is high. The one they have right now is about ninety. Uh, but they're, they're getting all the estimates and they'll, they'll bring it to you, and then you're going to discuss what you feel is the best thing to do.
Awesome. Well, we want the best, right, so.
Yeah, and, um, and the chief is, but, uh, really, it's been a great learning experience finding out some of the things that we didn't know about, I don't think anyone here knows, that, uh, while we have Verizon Wireless that brought the lines up to the actual buildings, the lines that go from the front door of the building to the interior walls of the building is not Verizon. It's a different company called New Horizon. So, right now, we're paying presently about forty five hundred dollars a month for our phone service, not counting.
Borough or just the police department?
Borough and police department, pump station. It's still a lot of money.
Oh, yeah, definitely. Seems like a lot.
Yeah, so we're, so we're trying to work through all that. There's all different contracts. I don't know why anybody separated it, and it wasn't Verizon all the way through into the interior walls of the building. It stopped at the front doors. But, uh, that's just what we inherited and, uh, you know, it's been, it's been a journey just trying to figure out what we have. So, that's what's taking, taking all the time. Um, so, don't forget that we have to set aside a number into capital to cover though, the, the regular phones and the nine one one phones. I forgot to mention that before. I apologize with everything else.
Is that in the capital line item?
It is, it is, it is, and we'll break, and we, we should be, um, um, I'll work with Chris and getting a more updated chart to you, including all, all the other road programs and everything else, and things that you need to discuss. If you want to do Fifth Street, the assessed, the assessment ordinance. Um, you know, I, if that's, uh, something you want to look into more, I mean, I recommend it because it's helping the borough pay for getting that road paved. Um, you know.
So, Carol, just so I, that, this money is under the line item in the, the summary that we got that's called, um, Capital Improvement Fund?
Uh, what page do you want? Because there's so many different.
No, no, I, I'm not talking about the sixty four pages. No, no, I, I'm not talking about the sixty-four pages. I'm talking about the summary that we got from budget year to budget year.
All right, hold on.
That, that's the easiest one to look at and just try to get a handle on which line item. Because that's what we're looking at when we talk about what the tax decrease will be. Now, it says a hundred thousand.
Correct.
So that hundred thousand.
Well, he had originally put twenty-five, and then, because it was supposed to be a hundred and twenty-five, and then we had the forty. So we have a hundred and sixty-five in there. And if we break it out backwards, which is what we should do, what we should be keeping a running tally, and if Chris can jump in with me here. Um, Chris, did you? Chris, are you there?
So, so that's about two million dollars worth of work in the borough, right? Because if you take that number and divide it by five percent, it's two million dollars.
I think he got more than that. It was like three point two, right? Is Chris muted or he's unmuted?
Yeah, Borough Clerk, unmute Chris.
Chris unmuted.
Muted. It doesn't say he's muted.
Yeah, I know.
Thanks, I, I'm, I'm unmuted now. Thank you.
Over, over three, that we had spending power?
Correct, the, the, the current appropriation is one twenty-five, and we'd have just shy of forty thousand dollars available in our existing capital improvement fund. Which gets you to about, uh, three point two-nine million.
Right.
Okay, so.
So I've been, I've been saying three point two million, uh, just to be safe.
And then you guys are going to decide which you, you know, which projects you want to undertake and, and what to do that. I just put that in there. So that it's always easier to take money out and lower a budget than to do it the other way.
Yeah, I, I agree, and I wouldn't be lowering that number either, because it, it doesn't cost us anything.
Not really, and you never know when you need money in a capital fund. I'm, I'm just a big believer of leaving money in there and banking it and building on it every year instead of stripping yourself. Um.
Especially when you have room to do it.
Exactly. So there's a lot, there's a lot of good that you can do this year. I'm, I'm just, I'm here to help you navigate which projects you want, which projects you don't want. Or if you want to substitute a different project. That's what we're here for. And I had spoken to Councilman Wu. I, I would like one more workshop with all of you, maybe the first Monday, um, in April, to, to get all your feedback now. And then fine tune it again. And we're in good shape to be on time and get it, you know, get.
Do you think, do you think it's possible, would it be possible to substitute David with me? And then in the next meeting that you guys have as a committee, so that I can participate in these questions and figuring out what we do about those things that I've brought up, which is.
Why is that?
Which, why is that?
Yeah, why is that? You don't think David's capable of doing this?
Um.
I, I can, can I speak with that?
I would never insult anybody, but.
I'm just asking. We had David on there and.
I think I have more experience. I think I have more experience in that area in general. Um, you know, if somebody asked me to be on a technology committee, I would be like, oh, not me. Like, that's not my thing.
Right now, um, I'll take it under consideration, but right now the committee is reformed in January.
I.
Okay.
Uh, I think that, uh, it would be in the best interest of the town and the taxpayers and our pocketbooks to have Debbie on that committee. And, um, you know, um, listen, working in a school, you want to do what's best for students, and I think it's the same in a town, only it's not students, it's the residents. So I would very much be eager for Debbie to be on the, that committee. I think the town would be in excellent hands.
Well, I mean, it wasn't in the past, but if you think it's going to change, I'll, I'll consider it.
Thank you.
Line item that you're referring to, Mario, is the litigation fees, and that I had no control over.
You, you did. You, you actually added, let me finish. I have the floor. You added a whole entire layer of attorneys. Where you already had two attorneys. You added your very good friend, Al Wunsch. And he actually had absolutely zero experience in affordable housing. I'll never forget him acknowledging it, you acknowledging it, and then Jimmy Song actually saying, yeah, of course, he's got no experience, but he's a nice guy. And he's a good negotiator. Really? He did such a great job. He did such a great job. Yeah, well, look, you added a layer, and I'm just responding to your question about, or your statement about the budget as it relates to legal fees. You went out of your way to blow up the litigation legal fee budget.
No, no, I didn't.
You went out of your way, and then every chance you had to get rid of him, because you knew he wasn't doing a good job, you kept him.
Who wasn't doing a good job?
Al Wunsch wasn't doing a good job.
That's not true. He accomplished.
Well, you know, it's funny, you should say that, because I.
And if you would release the MOU to the public, the public would understand too.
Well, here's, here's the thing, right? Here's the thing. I wasn't copying on anything for two years, and you were. So maybe you need to give us all your files, so we can see what Al Wunsch did or didn't do. And maybe at the end of it.
Files, Mario.
No, I don't have your files. No, I don't. In fact, you affirmatively stated that I should not have things according to, to Tom Trauner. So, look, we're, we're going a little far afield. If you really want to be on the finance committee, I'll consider.
That's great. I don't, you know what, if, I, obviously you don't want my help, and you don't want my.
No, that's not true. I don't want your attitude, but I don't want.
That was obvious when you didn't put me on that committee, and that's okay.
Well, you blew up our budget last year. Look at what you did.
Did here.
Without you, well, with you, we had a tax increase. Without you, we're having a tax.
I know, that's the whole purpose, you know, you, you don't want to acknowledge that.
I'm actually cutting taxes, and you're raising taxes. You're paying your friends, and I'm, I'm helping residents. So, there we go.
Clear to the public.
Let's move on. It's okay. I know you're going to keep interrupting me. It's okay, let's move on. No, you keep interrupting, so.
No.
If we can have a conversation.
I'm actually. Because I cannot be of any benefit any longer, so I.
You know what, that's self-professed. It's probably true, but you have a sworn duty to stay on, so.
Because I will not continue to stay on while you are abusive and creating.
I'm not abusive. I'm just trying for you not to interrupt me.
All these false narratives, so I'm going to say goodbye. Good night, everybody.
Uh, council, Borough Administrator had proposed that we have one more, um, budget workshop.
We're not done yet, so.
Yeah.
I don't know why I'm disappointed that Councilwoman Savari just dropped off. Did she really just drop off?
Well, that's how seriously she takes her oath of office, right? If she doesn't hear what she wants to hear, she drops off.
It's very unfortunate because.
You know, a lot of work, can we just stop, everyone, please? A lot of work went into this. Everybody has their own different requests. We're all trying to provide you with everything you need. And we're trying to introduce a budget earlier than it's ever been introduced before. We need a little bit of cooperation from everybody to be productive and give the feedback needed to those of us that need to come back with you to get, to get it fine tuned more to a point that you can vote.
It's a shame for Inglewood Cliffs because Mayor.
You have been. You have been.
You, you know what?
He abuses, he abuses everybody.
I called out the lies, but I hear them, you're going to hear from me.
I look.
Right now, you're.
All the articles.
You're the one, you're the one who walked out on the workshop.
The ones are.
Okay, you're the one who walked out on the budget workshop. Nope, nope, nope.
You're an abuser. You are an abuser. Mario Kranjak.
No, that's not right.
An abuser.
So, I don't think you're allowed to say that, David.
And I voted for.
David, you're, you're not allowed to say that, David.
Has the floor.
What, what, what's the fact of the matter, David? Why are you saying I'm an abuser? State some facts, David.
Because.
Statement.
Because.
Why? Because I call people out when they lie?
No, because first.
Okay, so why? Go ahead.
You mute people, you, you prevent people from.
I don't have control of the meeting tonight. I'm not muting anyone.
You're talking over people, people that are, you know.
No, you're talking over people. Go ahead, what else, David? Why am I an abuser, David? Come on, David. Give us some moral panic from your side. Give it to us. Let's hear it. What's your panic tonight, David?
Look at all the articles.
What, David?
About you. Look at all the.
No, David, David, you control the press, not me. David, you control the press. What's next, David? Go ahead.
I don't control.
You went running to Katie Sobko a couple of weeks ago, and I straightened her out, and she didn't write the article, did she? Okay, so go ahead, David. What else, David? Say some facts. David, we're waiting.
Well.
Go ahead. Do you want to call Karen Geiger or David, ask them what you should be saying next? Go ahead. All right, let's move on. Yeah, let's, let's move on. David, David's run out of things to say, please.
For years.
Let's, let's go, David. No, no, David, you, you're just saying things, though. David, give us some facts, David.
We have, we have two professionals that we are paying that are sitting here.
Right, okay, that's fine. My, my last statement is, and I'll, I'll defer to you, but here's the thing. David just called me something that's not true. He had no facts to support it. He had no facts to support it. And now, and now, no, so he's going to rely on newspapers, okay? Okay, well, give us some facts, David, not, not fake news. All right, David, you don't have anything, do you?
I see with my own, that's how you talk to people.
You're a caricature of yourself, David, right now. Okay, enough.
Talk to people with respect.
Councilman Wu, please continue this meeting, if you have to mute him.
Borough Administrator has the floor. Borough Administrator McMorra has the floor.
Okay, so where, where we left off when Councilwoman Savari, um, left, I, I was, I was tallying all of the, uh, capital items. If we can, uh, go, go over this again, please, and everybody could just make some, some notes. Um, we put aside one point three million for improvements to Witty Field, including lights. We put aside, uh, three hundred thousand dollars for roads. We put aside two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Summit Street, um, road improvement program. We will be reimbursed, but we have to place it into the budget in order to be able to receive that grant. We, we put aside, uh, okay, hold on a second. We put aside a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the possible assessment ordinance and design portion of Fifth Street. That's if you want to go ahead with that pro, project. Those items right there bring you to one point seven seven five in capital improvements. On top of that, you have, but it's about, I, I'm, this is a guesstimate, okay? It could be anywhere from one twenty-five to three hundred and twenty-five for phones. That's going to be your decision on what you want to do with, that's including nine-one-one. And what companies you want to go with. For right now, you're just adding numbers to see where your capital is going to add up. I made a recommendation based on what we all advised, uh, for IT of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You have, um, about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for police. You have about a hundred and forty thousand dollars for DPW. Now, I believe for the DPW, and I'm waiting for Steve Rogan to get back to me, that only may be forty. We may be able to use a capital ordinance on the equipment, for one of the pieces of equipment that, um, the DPW Superintendent Neville is requesting. If that's the case, that number would go down to forty. The forty thousand, it was explained to me by both Mark Neville and members of the community that they're, uh, in great need of a tractor, a small tractor, to be able to upkeep the fields. Um, and in essence, that would keep them, um, in better condition long term. So, high side, forty thousand for a tractor. Mark is trying to get a better price on that. Uh, and there was, I think, about a forty-five thousand dollar, uh, requirement from the fire department. And they were all things that of age and are needed. Chris, did I forget anything on the list that you have? And if I did, please appreciate you jumping in.
Uh, I have police, DPW, fire prevention, road improvement, and technology. So I think you hit, I think you had all the ones that I had.
I went above that. Again, these are all negotiable items. Uh, obviously, I want feedback from the council. If you need more information on any of them, I'll get you that information by the next, by the next meeting. But these are the items that, um, in meeting with department heads and, um, you know, feedback from, um, other members of, of the community. These are items that definitely, um, need to be looked at, you know. So, if we could stick on capital, does anyone have any questions that I can help you with on any of these capital items that I listed? Not whether or not we should keep it in, but just costs or what you want me to bring back to you, just from that standpoint first.
Borough Administrator, you mentioned the, um, two hundred thousand for Summit Street in order to get the grant.
Two fifty. I, I was told, and Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, that we have to put the money into the budget to get, to be able to get reimbursed, the two hundred and two thousand has to first be in the budget.
With the, with the grant, we, we do have to either appro, we have to appropriate the grant in either the budget or in a capital ordinance. Uh, once we appropriate the grant, that gives us the authority to spend against it, and it will set up a receivable for that grant, uh, where the reimbursement will be applied.
Right, the, well, right, when Andy explained to me, we had to put it into capital to be able to appropriate the grant. And again, that was, I'm only doing what I was told I needed to do. Um, it's, it, the grant is two oh-two. I put it at two, two fifty, in case we ran short on Summit Street. You know, we didn't want to be that tight, but again, that's up to you.
I'd like to add something very quickly, um.
Are we on the grant? We're, we're on.
Yes, I, I realize that. You know, Mayor Parisi put a Republican on the, um, budget.
Okay, I really, can we?
Can we focus? Can we focus? This isn't stream of consciousness, David. Focus on the grants.
So, you know.
You stay focused on the capital.
Just insist that Debbie is the most qualified on the council to be.
David, leadership is not by stream of consciousness, okay? We are talking about a specific item of the budget. We have already spoken about Debbie being or not being on the finance committee. Can you please just focus?
Not only are you an abuser, you're a bully.
Well, I'm not an abuser. I'm also stating the fact of the matter is that we have leadership to do here, okay? And if you're unable to sit on a committee or lead, then you should rethink why you're even on the council, David.
I'm on the council. I know exactly why I'm on the council.
All right, good. So, so now, now do you know where we are on the agenda and where we are in the budget?
Absolutely.
Because that's what we're going to talk about right now.
Good, very good.
So, so, so do we? Okay, so do we have any questions about the, the capital items that I mentioned here? Police, DPW, fire, roads?
For the next. What I'd like to request, and I don't know if Chris can be a help on that, but the actual figures of what we spent two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, and then what we proposed to spend in this year. And what would also be helpful in the presentation is to have some sort of organization where all of this information is in a binder type of thing. And in addition to that, even bar graphs that would indicate the, where if we go up in the budget line or down in the budget line. So it actually can be very visual. Um, I think, I, budgets presented in that way make it very, very easy to see where we're, where we've been and where we're going.
Okay, well, we're, we're on something else right now. So you don't even know where we are. You don't know where you were. You don't know where you're going right now. Chris, you could do all that, but, uh, and, and if, if David really wants a bar chart, you could do that, and add a pie chart, and they're also for him, okay? But we are on a specific question that the Borough Administrator had. Can anyone comment or say it's okay?
If I may explain the importance of this for all of you that have not done this before. We have deadlines to introduce capital ordinances, several of which need to, um, introduced at the April meeting. So, we're trying to do the best for the public here. And we're on a very tight deadline. That is why I'm trying to keep everyone as focused as possible on the subject at hand, on the capital ordinances first, because those of us that have been on council before know there's a time period, I'll let Paul or, uh, Chris, whichever would like to jump in to explain as Steve Rogan or Bon Council has explained to me, the importance of having these introduced on time. Otherwise, you will not have roads done this year, because if you, you could put money in a budget. But if you don't get your capital ordinances done on time and approved, you're not going to be able to pay for your roads. So everybody needs to just stay focused on the subject at hand in, on what we're talking about and what we, what you would like to do or not like to do. That's, that's, if we can, it would really be appreciated.
Borough Administrator, um, I, I support these line items. I think we need to take a close look at the phone system. Um, we all need to look at that together. It's a very large range, um, for which you provided to us. Uh, certainly, nine-one-one is not compromiseable, and we need to, it's just an expensive item uh, for the public, for the public to know. It's, it's, it's a traditional copper wire, I assume, right? Uh, whereas the other ones have IP technology, so we all need to make some effort and, and.
Other ones are not going to cost that much at all, Councilman.
Yeah, any information you're getting from these vendors, please do forward, uh, to us.
Yes.
At the earliest. Police and DPW, from my four years on the council, I think the request this year. Police and DPW, from my four years on the council, I think the request this year is quite reasonable, and the fire department as well. So I support all of those line items. The field and the lights, it's just the lights and some additional improvements around the field, right? I don't think we've discussed turf at all in that line item. I support lights. The turf, the turf topic, I think I would, I reserve comment on that. But the lights I do support, so.
I'd like to.
That's all I have.
I'd like to comment on the Witty Field subject. I also do support the lights and would like to hear more in terms of what the turf is. And we'll leave it at that.
Sure, that's absolutely, of course. But again, everybody understands you have to have the money in the budget so that you can get to that next spot. And, you know, thank you. I will, when that time is appropriate, we'll get more information on that. So Councilman DiGogorio, any comments?
Well, I will say, and I'll repeat what Debbie Sabari said at one meeting. If there's any kind of huge investment going to Witty Field, that we ask the residents what they think and put it out to the residents. I think that's respectful to get a vote on that. As far as the phone system goes, and I've requested this before, and actually in the meetings, I think we really need to look at what other towns are doing, surrounding towns. Tenafly, we have Fort Lee. And if we get a good look at what they're doing, that's good. And also to look what we have in place. What phone system do we have in place now?
Cisco.
What company? Cisco? So we should, we should explore what Cisco has and.
We have been, Councilman, I updated you.
So what we need to do is, you know, carefully move forward, get advice from other communities that might be. It's always good to check with other communities and see what they do and get their input. So, listen, I believe that we have to have a very reliable phone system that is going to be accommodating 911. You know, I definitely believe that careful investment is, we have to be prudent. We have to be prudent as to how we repair things. We have to be prudent as to how we replace things. And again, I'll say that, you know, and I recall some years back and when Mayor Perizzi was mayor, they went through the budget in the executive session, in the administration building, line by line. And I remember that Chief Chafi was there and that Mark Neville was there. And if there are any questions, then we could ask them, they, well, they could ask them directly. I thought that was a very, very healthy way of going through the budget. Because quite frankly, I'm looking at a lot of these figures. I don't know what they are, and I don't see Mark or Chief of Police. So again, if that can be done in an efficient way with a binder and have all the figures there, we probably could have had the budget done, you know, by now or in a couple of weeks.
Councilman Katruba, one moment. Councilman DiGogorio, you have all that information. You, I don't know that you open any of my emails or read them, but you have it.
Yes, I do.
Excuse me.
It's all over there.
Sir, sir. Okay, you, any time I try to reach out to you, I try to provide you with information. You do not want to work with myself or Councilman Wu or Councilman Katruba, okay? The purpose of being on a council committee is so that you speak to your other members, and you can call the department heads. You also can call the department head on your own, but it's not effective to waste everyone's time to do it in this fashion as you're recommending.
Well, I would say.
We were on a phone call with you for 45 minutes. You refused to turn your camera or your audio on. For 45 minutes, we sat there and.
Listen, right now.
Well, I asked you to.
Well, I did.
Councilman DiGogorio, Councilman Katruba has his hands up.
Okay, I'm not finished yet. I have to finish. First of all, I did email Councilman Wu. I do not want to, I cannot meet during the day. I only have a very limited time, and sometimes I can't even eat lunch. And if you want to watch me eat my lunch, I'll put my camera on. I don't like to chew food, and I don't like to see people eating on camera. Now, that's one point. The second point is, I cannot meet during the day. I need to meet after hours. I am working during the day. I don't know what everyone else is doing during the day, but I am working. I can meet after 3:30 or in the evening. I'll be glad to meet as long as you want. And also, it would be in the town's best interest to put me on another committee like Buildings and Grounds or Technology or whatever other committee that I have expertise in. I do not have expertise, I'm the first to admit it, in budget. Debbie Sabari does. That is her daytime job, basically. And the town is very well-served with her questions, her knowledge, whether you like it or not. That's the way it is. And if the mayor has courage and wants to honestly do things in the interest of every resident in town, he would take that into account and not be political and put the best people on the committees as Mayor Perizzi did. And, you know, we can all learn from, we can all learn.
Political conversations with.
Not a political, it's a fact.
This is inappropriate.
I'm telling you, fact.
The mayor has, the mayor has, the mayor has addressed that point already. So I think let's move on from that. He said he would get under consideration. So, Councilman.
That's a very intelligent thing, and it's.
So David, David, just because, David, David, just because you don't know anything about finance doesn't mean that you get to monopolize a conversation about finance with things that are non-finance, okay?
I'm the first to admit, I don't know.
Well, you keep droning on about the same thing. And our Borough Administrator and our council are trying to accomplish a budget with our professionals. And all you want the public to know is, one, that you don't want to be on this committee; two, you know nothing about finance; and three, you're just droning on. So please, please.
Simply put, Debbie back up.
Stop, stop, David, stop. Let this budget meeting continue without your theater, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Katruba has his hands up.
Yeah, I, David, last I checked, we met with the chief, and we had a meeting with the head of DPW.
Correct.
Okay, so your questions were already addressed.
Not with the full council.
But the point is, the point is, you're supposed to report these things. You didn't have any questions at all, sir. So you had the opportunity for sitting on the finance committee to ask these questions. The second thing is, if you want to change, I've already changed my schedule to accommodate yours because I don't have the time during the day. If you want to, if you wish to move it at the evening, I'll be more than happy to accommodate you. No problem. I don't have any.
Look forward to it.
Okay, so, and as far as Ms. Sabari's concerned, my opinion is she failed this burden for the past two years. And I just don't see any extra added value to adding her to the committee. But again, that's the, I'll leave it.
I'm sorry if you're afraid of people that have knowledge.
Afraid of anything, sir. Listen, please don't twist the words around. I mean, if anything is, if anything is clear to anyone, it's that I'm not afraid of anything. I'm not afraid of tackling any subject at all. So thank you.
Okay, so there's no further questions other than the phones, which Council President Wu, just so you know, the 911 system, I'm leaving in the hands of police. I'm waiting for them to report to me. They know what's best, that works for them. They're speaking to other chiefs, you know, and other departments and other towns. And, you know, I'm not involved in that part at all. But he will report to me, and then I will bring you all that information. I have asked him to, I've asked him to present everything, and he is. And if it's helpful to have the chief come when it's appropriate to make that presentation, I will ask him. I'm just saying that place the money in the capital. I'm not saying to spend it and pick whatever system you want. Just make sure it's in the budget and introduce it that way. That's the best way to move forward and not hold back anything that needs to be done.
Ms. McMoran, I just had a quick question regarding body cams. Is that, is that a state unfunded mandate, or are they providing funding?
No, it's a requirement, and it needs to be done by June.
But they're not, they're not providing funds to municipal?
No, no, they had programs that they were offering special prices for, and the chief thought it was a total of 15. And then he realized that it was multiple payments. So he called me on that today. And, but it's a statement that, and, you know, this was on his list last year as well, and it wasn't addressed this year. It has to be done by June, so we don't have a choice.
Right, that's right. Last year's council was defunding police. This year's council is funding them.
Okay, so I think we're good with capital. If, does Paul, I don't know, Paul or Chris want to have any comments about capital before we move on to the other portion?
I'll just make a quick comment regarding some of the questions and comments that you had briefly.
Thank you.
Before, capital improvement fund is a great area to add to, Carol. I do agree with what you said. Even if you just can anticipate future projects, putting the money in the capital improvement line item, it never goes away, right? So that money just gets set aside, and then when you need it, you can use it for your down payment. Because sometimes coming up with a big down payment in one year is difficult. So putting a little away, a little away every year is a good idea. On the police SUVs versus the cars and the motorcycle, the police SUV can be bonded. A motorcycle or a car has to be run through the current fund of the budget. That has to be a direct expense in the budget. So you can't make that part of a bond ordinance. The only thing, the only police vehicles that can be part of a bond ordinance is a police SUV. That's why you see more SUVs nowadays than police cars. The last thing on the bond ordinance, you wanted Chris Sarai to jump in and give a brief outline of how it works. If you have, a bond ordinance just authorizes the debt. So if you have some projects in mind, get in touch with bond counsel. Get the bond ordinance introduced because it needs to be advertised. And there's an, first, it's got to be introduced. It's got to be advertised, and there's a waiting period before it could be adopted. So if you have any idea of what you want to do in a capital ordinance, even if it's a wish list, get the bond ordinance going, get the debt authorized. It means absolutely nothing other than they're turning the authority to fund the bond ordinance over to you and the CFO. So that, that's a, you know, prudent planning because we've had instances where people wanted to spend the money, and they couldn't because they didn't have a bond ordinance in place. They waited too long. That's it.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Paul, very well said. Two of the projects that we have to act on immediately at the April meeting, it's already on our list, is the IT improvements, which we are all aware of. That bond ordinance needs to be introduced at the April meeting, and the road improvement program. That also needs to be introduced at the April meeting so that you'll be able to. So Paul, I guess I will let the chief know so that the motorcycle cannot be bonded and put into capital.
Yeah, just because it can't go into a bond doesn't mean you can't buy it, obviously. You could buy it.
The council has to decide if they want to put it into their, you know.
Right, or, or as Chris mentioned, I believe, you could also buy it as a direct capital purchase out of the capital improvement fund. That, of course, you could do. There are other alternatives, but the concept of bonding has to do with useful life. And there's just not enough useful life in a police car. They get beat up too much, you know? That's why the state wants, wants you to get, for some reason, SUVs. I don't know.
So, so Paul, can the motorcycle go, be paid for from the capital improvement fund? I thought I heard you say.
Sure, of course, yeah. Capital improvement fund is not, is not a bond ordinance, right? A bond ordinance, the key is useful life. And to be very, to be very frank with you, in 30 years, nobody's really ever asked me for a motorcycle. And I think Chris mentioned that he's going to run it by a bond counsel. It wouldn't be a terrible idea to run it by because, again, very few people have ever asked me about a motorcycle.
Okay, all right, so.
I mean, it doesn't mean they don't have them. It just means they paid, they budgeted the line item for, you know, purchase a motorcycle, which anyone could do. Bond ordinance really just means, why there's limitations is they're limiting the amount of years you can spread the cost, that's all.
Correct, correct. Okay, so I think Council President Mayor, I think that that's, that's great direction with the capital projects. I think I have my direction on that. And if you want to move to the other parts of the budget where Chris, I thought he did a great job in highlighting areas that you may need discussion on. I'll leave it in your hands at this point, or Chris wants to jump in maybe and take over here. I know that new hires is one of the areas that you have highlighted throughout these papers. And obviously, the new hires, I believe, is investing back into the town. And I believe that you should be providing the services that the residents deserve and looking for, you know? Whether it's rec or it's increasing our DPW staff or investing in our police, it's all an investment. And, you know, I think it's money well spent, so. I'll answer all your questions, whatever you have here. But I'll turn it back to you. Paul, Chris, if you want to jump in, you're more than welcome to.
I don't have anything to add right now. I'm happy to answer any questions, so.
Chris, the only thing if you could help with, because I think you and I had the discussion about how much surplus to use, and there was a certain amount that you said would, you know, would be safe to use, don't go over a certain number. Would you be kind enough to, well, Councilwoman Sabari dropped off now, but if you can address that and the situation that she was talking about with the money from LG, that the borough gets all the money and nobody else gets any of the money. And could you address some of those comments that she made? Because I'm not aware of that. I don't know if you are.
Well, at a high level, and I don't have the information. I think that I did respond to this briefly at the last budget meeting. I would have to defer to the tax assessor on any questions regarding the assessment of the new, of the new property or how that was handled. But what I can.
I'm not aware either, so we're in the same boat here.
So what I can respond to is that we received $1 million in excess tax collections for 2020, which is on our result of operations sheet on our financial statements as going into surplus. So that, that is the amount that is available in surplus from excess tax collections, which is where any additional assessments would have gone into at the end of 2020. In the current version of the budget document that everybody has tonight, we're utilizing $1,146,950. So compared to the amount that we utilized in 2020, we're using $925,750 more dollars than last year. So that's only about $75,000 less than the amount that we replenished surplus as a result of the excess tax collections. Now, that, the result of the excess tax collections is not the only item that replenishes surplus. So we do have room to use more surplus. However, what I had cautioned against, to, I caution everybody against it, is if we use more than what we're going to replenish or what we anticipate replenishing in the following year, you will be starting behind in the, in the next budget year by the amount that you didn't replenish. So a very quick example is if we use, you know, a full $1.8 million of available surplus in this year's budget, and we only replenish $1 million, then we'll be in a position where we're $800,000 behind. So you might see an excellent tax reduction this year, but you'll see a major tax increase again next year. So I only caution against that to try to even out the amount that, you know, you're going to be increasing the tax levy each year.
Chris, I, I, I thank you so much for that explanation. I, I think it's very important that you explain to the public so that they have a true full picture of the explanation of the surplus that is being used this year, proposed to be used. Let me correct that. Because if, if on face value and listening to what you just said, when you compare it to the twenty twenty used of two hundred and twenty-one thousand and we're using nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar extra, the average person, that sounds like, you know, my God, they're spending nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars extra in surplus. Before I go on to my next statement, will you please explain to the public why the council only used two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars in surplus last year?
Well, uh, that's part of the reason why I have three years on the summary sheet. Uh, in two thousand nineteen, we used just over one point two million. Uh, so using one point one million in twenty twenty-one is not, uh, that far off. The reason why, uh, we had, we used two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars last year is because that was all of the available cash surplus at the time. Uh, in the twenty twenty-one budget, uh, or in the twenty twenty financial statements, we have an available cash surplus of, uh, just over one point eight million dollars that's available to use. So we're using, uh, the, the one point one out of one point eight.
Yeah, and Chris, I, I greatly appreciate you putting those three terms and to give that full picture. Because by only comparing it to the two, you know, twenty twenty budget, it doesn't fully let you understand that the council could only use the two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars, um, out of the surplus. We're actually using less surplus proposed to use this year at one point one four six nine fifty than the council used in the year two thousand nineteen, where they used one million, two hundred and seventeen thousand. That would be the true comparison in a year where you could use surplus comparing one to another. I just wanna, I want everyone to understand so there's no false narrative that we're using and, you know, unbelievable amount of surplus that hasn't been used before. We actually used more surplus in the year, uh, twenty nineteen, uh, mayor and, uh, councilman.
Thank you.
Chris, a question for you. You, you mentioned the, the revenue collected, one million dollars. You, you can't speak for LG, but just overall, there's one million dollars more. Um, is part of that difference potentially, uh, some kind of corporate tax that's been, that, that, that hasn't been collected, uh, or some major tax appeal? Um, and, and why we have, uh, a difference there? And, and it's not as high, uh, uh, a number as we would have anticipated with LG coming online?
Uh, councilman, yes, so, so the, uh, the number that I'm, that I'm using here. So the app, the exact number in the financial statements is one million, one hundred and thirty-six thousand, four twenty-seven, forty-four. Uh, and that is the net result of the cash collections of all of our current year taxes in twenty twenty. So that would accommodate any, uh, any reductions in our collection uh, due to tax appeals, any added assessments such as the one for LG, uh, and plus or minus all of the residential tax collections for the year. So it does net out everything. That's why, uh, I didn't want to give an answer and I, and I didn't give an answer regarding the one point five million because it very well could have been one point five million in collections. And the net result, uh, uh, was lowered by four hundred thousand dollars as a result of tax collections and tax appeals. I, I, I don't want to, uh, give an opinion on that because I don't have the data in front of me right now. Um, but we, we can certainly go back and find out how much was assessed and how much was billed. I'd have to just, uh, talk to the tax collector about that and see what the, uh, added assessment was for that property. And then the rest of the one point one million dollars would have been the net results of, uh, all of the other properties in town.
Anybody have any other questions?
I don't, thank you.
None for me.
Nope, thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
If we reduce the one point eight million dollars in litigation to, uh, two hundred thousand, let's say, uh, one point six million, what does that represent per taxpayer, Mr. Padgett? In what they would pay out of pocket?
Uh, okay, so the, the question is, on the average tax bill, if we were to take one point six million dollars out of this budget, what would it equal?
Yes, what would that, what would the return be?
Uh, it would be about, it would be about five hundred and ninety-three, uh, five hundred and ninety-three dollars on the average tax bill. For every, for every hundred thousand dollars that the, uh, budget changes, look at about thirty-nine dollars and sixty cents on the average tax bill.
Okay, and that would not affect that you would mention that we would have to, if we, uh, saved in the wrong places or, uh, you know, with the, um, what you had mentioned before, that we would be at risk of having to raise taxes more next year. Um, you said surplus, right? We want to end up more or less in the same spot this year and next year?
This would, this would not, this would not affect, um, our surplus balance. Uh, unless, I mean, the, so if we, if we keep one point eight million dollars in this budget and we don't spend it, it will lapse to surplus at the end of twenty twenty-two. So you'll have two budget years, uh, where that stays on the balance sheet as a budget item and an appropriation reserve item. And at the end of twenty twenty-two, that would then lapse to surplus. If you take it out of this year's budget, uh, then yes, it would just lower the amount to be raised by taxation by one point six million dollars, which is where you'll find your, uh, reduction in the, in the municipal portion of the tax bill.
So if we're very, very careful with litigation this year, um, either it's going to go into surplus next year or it could go directly back to the taxpayers this year if we would cut it down to say two or three hundred thousand dollars, which, I mean, Debbie had alluded that, uh, Debbie Sabari, Councilman Sabari alluded that, uh, to that before. And I think that's very important information for the public to know because, you know, if the, if we're gonna go after, go on witch hunts basically, that don't pay off, uh, I think it would be, um,
Can you, can you-
Reckless.
Can you explain witch hunts to me, please?
Um, I think, uh, I think you know what that means.
Can, can you explain what a witch hunt means?
Well, it would be a lawsuit that's, uh, based on vengeance and not on what's good for the town. That's one definition.
Do you have any specific facts that you want to talk about?
I do not. I think you would be well aware of all of the vengeance, uh, uh, based lawsuits that have gone on in the past in this town and what it's caused the taxpayers.
So what, what is vengeance in the context of your, your statement?
Uh, if, you know what? I, I think that vengeance is, speaks for itself.
What would, no, no.
If you don't know what it means, feel free to-
I said in the context of your statement, what are witch hunts and what is vengeance?
I will not answer that because it's, has nothing to do. I'm just saying-
You're the one who uttered those words.
No, listen, uh-
Stand behind your words, David.
So if you're gonna go after someone, mayor, uh, because you don't like that person, that's costing the taxpayers money.
What does going after someone mean in your, in your vernacular?
I'm speaking very plain English. I don't know why you do not understand how, what I'm speaking about.
Basically, if, if the borough sued someone because that person or that entity stole money from the borough, you'd be okay with that, right? Because that's, that's not vengeance, that's-
Simply, I am simply saying-
Just writing the wrong, right?
I'm just simply saying that based on history, you have gone after, you have, there's been a lot-
What have I gone after, David?
There's been a lot of litigation in this town.
Really? I, I didn't start the affordable housing litigation. The Democrats did that.
You whipped up a crowd and-
I didn't, I didn't start a litigation with-
Your planning, I said it before, I'm not just kidding. You're planning for and voting against a beautiful corporate development which opened us up to, uh, a, a lawsuit of, of builders' remedy laws.
Describe a beautiful corporate development.
You know what? Let's look.
David, what, what is a beautiful corporate development? Is a beautiful corporate development one that pivots into four hundred and fifty residential units? Is that a beautiful corporate development? Because to me, a beautiful corporate development is the LG building. It's the new Unilever building. It's the CNBC building. Those are beautiful corporate developments. If you want to attribute some kind of feeling to them. Uh, what you have here is not a beautiful corporate development. You have people who basically lied to you, David. And, and came in with a corporate deal and turned it into a residential deal because New Jersey lets them do that.
Because the planning board turned down their beautiful plan. I don't want to go-
Because they lied to her. Well, you, you're the one who brought this up, David. So support what you're saying with facts.
Your planning board turned down the corporate development, number one.
My planning board turned down a subdivision of a corporate development.
Number two, and in two thousand nineteen in the summer, you picked on me. In the, I had the, my hand was, I was the only hand that was up in the, um,
Right, because you're the only person in our town that was supporting eight hundred Sylvans residential development.
At that point, and I've subsequently learned that it was four hundred units, right now, because-
But you, you were the only person. You're, you are in fact, you're the outlier. David, David, I speak for the public here. You're the outlier, not me. You're one out of three hundred people.
Why am I the outlier, mayor?
Because you're the only person who supported high density housing at eight hundred Sylvan.
I supported the laws of New Jersey and-
So did I. I did too. I wanted to build an electric terrace.
And at the time, and a couple of million dollars now later, uh, we're in the situation that we're in. And I feel for the people that are living on Floyd because we would have had the buffer and we would not have taken the trees down had that settlement agreement been encouraged by you in that, uh, momentous meeting of summer two thousand nineteen. Instead, you decided to whip up the crowd.
Here's what, here's what's going on here, David. Here's what's going, you're gaslighting everybody. You're trying to change reality to something that fits your narrative. What was actually happening back then was eight hundred Sylvan came in and they asked for a corporate redevelopment with subdivisions, which we don't do, okay? They could have, they, they bought the property in one word, as a, as a corporate commercial property.
When you took over as mayor.
And, no, and in two thousand nineteen, you guys had the votes to do whatever you wanted. In two thousand twenty, you had the votes. But your political analysis didn't let you take the vote because you thought that you could do both. You thought that you could keep the support of, of the residents, uh, and let eight hundred Sylvan destroy this town.
Every article in the newspaper about-
We go again with the articles of the newspaper, okay?
Every article.
You really think that I give any credibility to the Bergen Record? It's a former newspaper. It is a tended, attached part of the Democratic Party in Bergen County. They have yet to write a decent article on anyone other than a Democrat. That makes them a political tool, a former newspaper. So we're not reading the Bergen Record.
Listen.
Councilman Rubus has a-
I like to make a point in that they never even, they never even, uh, printed the results of the last election, I don't think.
Honestly, I really don't want to talk about this anymore. Uh, I don't want to talk about-
I didn't think-
When, when, when I have stupidity that I'm dealing with, and I am dealing with stupidity in you, you are a bully.
So that's what you do.
What you have done-
You resort to name calling.
Yeah, well, it's not, it's very accurate and I'll tell you-
You, you actually resort to name calling because now you've run out of rope. You've hung yourself.
It was stupid not to-
You put your feelings out there. You haven't supported anything with facts.
It was stupid not to-
You have no facts.
You could have-
And facts don't care about your feelings, David.
You could have sat down with Mayor Parisi and you could have gotten facts from him. You could have made friends with Mayor Parisi. You could have made friends with people that you made enemies with in town.
Why would I want to be friends with Mayor Parisi? Why would I want to be friends with Mayor Parisi?
Over the years, I have witnessed all of it.
David, explain to me, explain to me in a rational adult tone, why I would want to be friends with Mayor Parisi. Who, he and his father ran this town for forty-two years. They benefited every single crony of their own. But the residents still have a terrible park, terrible roads, terrible services when I came in. And we started fixing and all that. And we also gave everybody the first tax break in forty-two years, okay?
Well, then give them the tax break this year.
Mayor Parisi. Why? So he could corrupt me the way he corrupted you?
Because if, if you, if you alienate people, it's to your own loss.
If you alienate the right people, you're better off.
No, no.
Okay, like, if you alienate the right people, you're much better off in life. And the town is-
The town today, and look at the condition.
Listen, you, you, I mean, you do a great job sucking up to Mayor Parisi because you want his name on that building more than anything. Why don't you put his name in front of your house too while you're at it, okay?
Why don't you move, um, why don't you move Island Plockers Stone back to where it was? That was an anti-Semitic move that you did to a Holocaust survivor. And you have a track record of being-
Is that where we're going now?
And not doing-
Now you're creating, now you're creating moral panic, right? You're creating, you're bringing religion into it. What else are you gonna bring in, David? You have run out of stupidity tonight, okay? And it's amazing that someone like you could do that. Yeah, that's inappropriate.
Oh, yeah.
Think about what you just said. Think about what you just said. You're the one at the BLM rallies, okay? You're the one who wants to defund police. Think about what you're saying.
Did I say I wanted? You're putting words in my mouth.
You were at a rally.
You're putting words in my mouth because you know I'm bringing-
You and Sabari-
And you-
Byder were marching against our police force. You are marching against our police force. You have the audacity to stand here and give moral panic.
That's not the case.
All right, uh, councilman.
You, you are grabbing at straws now because you have no argument. And it's, it's really-
Senator McMorro, can you-
And the whole-
Discussion. Councilman, do you have control? Look, give me control, please.
You want to mute now? Okay, that's it. You want to mute. That's okay. You can mute.
We have to do it by party.
Could you give, um, the mayor control?
We have to get, we have to get-
The mayor has to have controls because he, his fascist mentality wants to cut people.
So now I'm a fascist. So David, su- support that statement that I'm a fascist.
Because you muted me forty times and Debbie, the, the last few meetings, the last meeting, I counted forty times.
Now you call me, you call me a doofit and abuser and a fascist tonight.
Yes, I have, and it's very accurate.
David, what else? What else do you want to call me?
I think those words-
Are you gonna actually show up and teach students tomorrow at Tena Fly with that kind of a mouth, that kind of a mentality?
Do I bring it? Do I bring up your lawsuit? Do I bring up your law firm? Do I bring up personal people's, uh, affairs?
I have no idea what you're talking about.
You brought in people's, people's family, you brought in-
All right, Ms. McMorro, go ahead.
We need to stop this. It's not healthy for anybody.
Okay, really, um, it, okay, I, I just want to talk to, um, Chris for a moment. Chris, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Hi, okay, um, while I, uh, understand why Councilman De Gregorio is, is trying to get soundbites um, that will probably, um, all, um, receive in the next coming days. I, I want to stay focused with you and if you could explain the importance to the council of budgeting appropriately with the knowledge that you have now on legal fees. Um, I respect you, Chris. We worked on many budgets together. Um, this is the first time I'm working with you on this position, in, in the position I'm in now. And I think you've done a great job with me and I thank you for everything that you've been doing to date. Um, Paul, I've worked with before, so, um, and thank him as well. But Chris, he's, he's not appropriately, um, bringing to your attention the litigation that the borough is, is, um, facing now. And in closed session, we discussed several matters. I'm not liberty to say, say why. Um, and, um, if you would be kind enough to explain the importance of needing to appropriately fund your legal line item. You and I have spoken about this many years and you've always cautioned me never to underestimate your, like, legal fees. It's always better to have extra and not to have under. Because if you have under, you will find yourself in the position that the council did in two thousand nineteen where they grossly underestimated, regardless what the reason is for, and I'm not speaking of that same reason now. But they grossly underestimated their legal fees. Councilman De Gregorio is trying to grossly underestimate and misrepresent what issues the borough is facing due to certain issues that he is well aware of. So is it appropriate to underestimate your legal line items when you have knowledge of things that are going on?
Uh, I, I mean, I, I, I think that that's, I don't know that that's-
I, I mean, I, I, I think that that's, I don't know that that's really a question. I mean, the.
Well, yes, it is.
You need to budget appropriately.
You gave me that answer when I was a sitting councilperson. And we were looking to put a certain number in the, in the, in the, in the legal line and, and you told myself and Catherine Steinell that you thought it was a grossly under. Underestimated number and that you recommended placing with, I think it was a couple of hundred thousand dollars extra at the time. I think I still have those emails. But, um, so wouldn't your position be the same now as well?
My, my position is identical to what it was at that point. I think at that point. Um, and, and, you know, so my, the, the, the first answer is yes, we absolutely need to budget adequately for every appropriation that we need in this budget.
Thank you.
Specifically with relation to, to what you're referencing. I know that we were a lot later in the year and we had received invoices to date that. Trended towards a much higher number being necessary in the budget, you know? So I don't have enough information to. Give you the same trend since it's still relatively early in the year, but.
You answered the question. You said that you need to adequately. Budget. You, you, you answered the question.
Of course, and that's, that's across the board. That's not just for legal fees. That's for every appropriation that we have in the budget.
Of course, but that's it. That's what I wanted to ask you. You answered the question. And, uh, Mayor, I, um, also, there's also, and listen, Councilman De Gregorio, there, there are, there are litigations. You are aware of another one. I'm not gonna, it was brought up earlier. Uh, I have not been advised, advised of the amount. That the borough may have to pay out of pocket for litigation. So that needs to be put into the budget as well. So that's going into legal fee. I think you are have a conflict to discuss it personally.
You can't talk about closed session, Ms. McMorro.
We didn't talk about your litigation in closed session. It's a public statement, sir. And the borough will have to pay for that and it needs to be in the budget and it will be in the legal line item. And the council will make a decision as to. That matter and you will be recused from that. So Mayor, if there's any other questions on any of the other items having to do with hiring or.
I would just say that I'm not sure why Councilman De Gregorio sued the borough, but he seems to have really good functioning of both arms that he, that he broke. So look, I, I plan on vigorously defending that lawsuit with De Gregorio.
Um, any other discussion on any of the hires or any of the other items that? That are on here. Other than capital.
No, thank you. We're, we're good on that.
Okay, very good. I'm going to take that, that everybody's okay with what's in here since I didn't hear any comments.
Yeah, thank you for all the good work, guys.
No problem.
Um, Ms. McMorro, as I said before. I do believe that getting all this information piecemeal. And I would love to see visuals. I'd love to see it in a binder, nice and neat. Where everyone can go through it. And as I said, it was done in open session. It was done at the administration building. It can be just as easily done. Uh, going through it line by line. Uh, so it really informs the public where their money is going.
I did that with you, sir, at the finance committee meeting.
It should be done. It should be done. I believe it should be done at a meeting just like this and it could take us.
That was thought.
Hours to go through every line and that's really, that's, that is, that is.
Did you do that for the last two years, Lizette? When you were administrator, did you do that for the last?
I don't, I'm not asking Lizette. I'm telling you what I thought.
I followed the same procedure.
I saw under Mayor Parisi, which I was very impressed with.
I worked with.
It was done and Mr. Favaro was there. I remember they all were sitting around going line by line by line. Was transparent. Um, people could, could see it. People could question it. I was sitting on the side. There was a few other people with me. And I believe that's the fair procedure to go through. So I have two points. When you go through, when you go through a budget, and again, I'm not a budget expert.
I didn't change the procedure. Oh, in fact, I have two points. One point is that all the information has been provided to you, Mr. De Gregorio. And one thing we can't do is we can't teach you about finance and we can't teach you how to read and we can't make you read, okay? So you have all the information. The other thing is you, when, when, um. Well, I guess it was before last year, we didn't have a pandemic. And yes, we would all get in a room and we would all meet in person and we would all go through the documents line by line. But in case you haven't figured it out, noticed or lived it, we're in the middle of a pandemic. We don't meet in conference rooms right now.
We can do it on Zoom. What's, you can do it by line.
You walked out of that meeting, but you walked out of that meeting, didn't you?
We were not going through it by line.
You walked out of that meeting.
We were not going through the, we were not doing it as the very professional way. That Mayor Parisi, Mayor Parisi did a great job going through the budget.
Our council members changed their schedule to accommodate you. What did you do? You left the meeting. You left the meeting. So tell the public the truth, okay? All right, with Ms. McMorro, please, um, continue or if it's done for.
Well, I, I mean, it doesn't seem like anyone has any questions about anything else. Obviously, you all recommended all of these hires. The advertising process is going on right now. Um, I believe the advertisement is through the end of next week. And then we'll start the interview process. I'm looking forward to having a part-time rec director again. Um, yes, they didn't have one last year because it was a pandemic, Mayor, but they fired the rec director in 2019. So, um, you know, it's, they, they should have hired another one immediately.
I've been muted again by the, by the fascist.
Don't let him interrupt me, please.
No.
Um. A lot of work went into rec when I was rec chair and I, I feel badly for the residents of this town that all of that work. I don't know where it went. So we're trying to resurrect that and I look forward to working with Councilman Katrubis. And everyone else on the rec committee to get rec back to where it is. And hopefully move away from this pandemic and.
Yeah, I, I've seen a lot of progress. Thank you, Councilwoman Katrubis and, and Ms. McMorro for doing all that. The children just deserve better programs than what, what had happened in 19 and 20. Uh, and I think the Little League, uh, the, the parents and the coaches who run Little League. Should really be looked up to in terms of the hard work and dedication and organization that they put into Little League. It should be transferable to other sports and other activities. So thank you very much.
Yeah, Mayor, the only other thing was the, to let the council know that, I don't want to forget about the seniors either. Um, Andy Hippelit and Mark Neville were very helpful of working with me on the CDBG grant. Um, it was, um, it was submitted on time yesterday. And we put in for $87,800 of a grant trying to convert the senior building. Um, wall touchless, you know, doors, bathrooms. And we want to try and get the, the seniors to get out, be able to get back into that senior center and feel safe. Um, getting in there. So fingers crossed, if we get half of it, I'll be happy, but you know, we, we put that in as well. So I'll keep you updated on that.
You know what? I just have a quick question on the budget. I, I saw that we received some COVID aid.
Yes. Paul could update that because the numbers seem to change from the, I got, I got one number first, Paul, and then the other numbers. Were a couple of hundred thousand dollars less. Can you update us on that? Thank you, Mayor, for bringing that up.
Yes, and where does it go in the budget also? Go ahead, Paul. Thank you.
So, um, some of the preliminary numbers that, that came out. Were based upon equalized valuations. They were basically estimates. There was no hard numbers at that point. The Division of Local Government Service is going to give us guidance on how we can utilize it. But obviously it's going to be a grant. It's going to be a federal grant. And the options are really kind of limited. We can either. Charge, uh, COVID related expenses to the grant, which means you wouldn't have to appropriate them in your budget. Uh, or they could be used for capital projects, which would be more of a stimulus than anything to do with COVID. I mean, I guess everything is related to COVID, but it would be more of a, more of a stimulus for doing capital projects. So, uh, the formal guidance is not out yet from the state. It's a federal grant and, um, I could send you the link to it, but frankly, until the state interprets it, it's not really going to be very helpful. It's, or, or it'll be exactly what I just said. It'll tell you it's a federal grant and those are your two options. So we're telling everyone, um, to pick it up in the grant fund. And once we have more guidance, we can either charge current expenses to it, uh, which is basically the same thing as picking it up as a revenue.
So Paul, how do we, how does that affect us if we're introducing on time in April and, and none of the information is out yet? How does that affect?
It, it really shouldn't. I mean, unless you're going to utilize it all to reduce taxes, which everyone's advising not to do. Because you don't know what strings might be attached to it. The, the base, I, I'm advising my clients to do the following. We pick it up, we, we move forward with the budget process just as is. And then when, um. Uh, the grant comes in, we, we set it up in the grant fund and then when the guidance comes in. We decide if we're going to use current fund expenses towards the grant. Or, uh, if it's more stimulus related to capital projects, use the, the, the monies that way. But either way, it's going to be the same thing as a revenue to the borough.
Uh, yeah, Paul, if you could work closely with me on that, I appreciate it. I mean, I think capital, capital projects, I agree with you. Um, would definitely be the way to go. Um, Mayor and Council, I, I heard a project that, that Closer did where they, they put all of the building department's. Documents online, everything. And I think it was like an $85,000 grant that they got. It's, I mean, that's something we definitely could use. Uh, right now, I mean, our building department is non-functioning unless you come into the building, you know? So there are a lot of things out there that, that can be done to improve services. Um, for the borough and the residents to capital projects. And they would be COVID related, Paul, you know?
But again, if it's stimulus for the fact of creating. Work, creating construction jobs, creating, uh. Like repaving roads or whatever, all that stimulus money. Uh, again, would just be a, a boost to any capital projects that you're anticipating doing.
Is there a talking deadline you have to use it by, Paul, though? Did they give that information out or what?
Again, that we're, we're, we're sitting tight as of this morning, still waiting for guidance. Because again, it's a federal grant that's got to flow through the state. And then, uh, some, some municipalities had got county money and they're asking you to not take both. So if you took the county money, you have to give the county money back.
Oh.
It, it's fluid. It's a fluid situation, but it'll come out. And, and like I said, by putting it in the grant fund, you have all your options though.
So you don't, you don't recommend delaying introducing the budget because.
No.
The county had said you might want to consider it. I, I didn't think you should.
Yeah, and, and the, the towns that are going to consider that, um, you know, I'm, I'm sure Chris is as well as I am. We're part of a, a statewide chat. And, uh, the guy that runs the statewide chat, uh, is telling everyone. To advise their governing bodies not to pick it all up in one year as a revenue because if you do that. Uh, similar to surplus, then you're really kind of, uh, not saving anything for next year. And, uh, again, I don't know if we'll even have that option. We have to see what federal. Uh, grant, uh, guidance comes along with it.
Okay, thank you, Paul.
But it's not, it's not any different than any other federal grant in that aspect, you know? Uh, in, in that you can utilize it for capital projects. What makes this one different is you might be able to utilize it for operating expenses, but there are grants that we do that for as well. Uh, you know, like, uh, Safe and Secure and, uh, you know, different type of DDEF or drunk driving. They're all basically taking expenses that you lay out for police officers for overtime. For expenses related to that, that we're charging to a grant. So it's really nothing different than any other grant.
I appreciate it, Paul. I'll, I'll be in touch with that.
By the way, what was the final number on that?
Can we just make sure before everybody gets off to confirm that meeting, everybody get their calendars out and.
So April 1st?
Um.
The first Monday you said in April.
I, I think that that, I, Lizette and I, Lizette and I had looked at the calendar. I think the first Monday. Oh, no, Tuesday, right, Lizette?
First Tuesday would be April 6th.
Lizette, can you hear me?
Yes.
Are you okay with the first Tuesday?
Yeah.
That would be April 6th.
Unless there's a different date that we, as long as it, well, Paul, how much time do you need if we introduce on the 14th, if we have? Paul and Chris? Did we lose them?
Uh, no.
No, Paul is here and so is Chris.
Paul and Chris, how, how much time do you need? To get all the documents for us to introduce on the 14th? We wanted to have one other meeting, budget meeting workshop.
I, I've been, uh, this is Chris. I've been keeping a copy of, or keeping a, a running list of all the items that change, uh, from, uh. From meeting to meeting. So on my end, uh, I don't need any additional time. I'm, I'm, I'll forward the summary to, uh, to Paul. And then I'll defer to him on, uh, how much time he would need to populate the state document.
Okay, Paul, do you want to share with us what you need? So we'll go backwards from that.
Well, again, you know, it really depends when you want to introduce and when you have what you'd consider final numbers. I mean, I, I have some preliminary numbers. And I know Chris has got a more working type of document where you've been changing some numbers, but really. To, uh, to, to finalize a document until you're finalized, unless you know when your line items will be final. Then just send me the final one and we'll take it from there.
Well, we're, we're looking to introduce, Paul, to do it on time is, it's the April meeting, correct?
Yes, that's.
Okay, so that, that's when we're looking to introduce the April meeting.
What, and what, and when is your April meeting?
It's the 14th? Right? Uh, April 14th.
Yeah, I mean, I think you should finalize everything on the first. If you're going to have a, or whenever your work, your last workshop is going to be.
Okay, so you want our last workshop to be on the first?
The, 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 the first or the fifth or the sixth? I mean, you know, one, one of those days.
Well, um. I'll let the council decide. Did they want it, today's the 19th? I can do the first of April as well. I mean, if you want to do Thursday.
If, if I could get the, if I could get the numbers on the first, that would be ideal.
Okay, so is, is everyone on the council available on April 1st?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so, um. Lizette, so you can confirm a special meeting for April 1st?
And then Chris, you, you can just send me everything on Friday, the second, and we'll take it from there.
Okay, so what time, um, what, can we do it a little bit later? Lizette, what time would work with you? I can't, I can't. Do we have a time, guys?
6:30, okay, for everyone. Same time.
I'm okay with that.
Um, if it's a little bit later, only, um, just waiting for the clerk to. Okay, so it, it just might be a little bit later to accommodate the clerk's schedule if, if need be, because we need her here. Is, okay, everyone?
And Carol, just read me that introduction date again.
April 1st. Oh, I'm sorry, 14th.
April 14th, a Wednesday.
Yes. If we could just wait a, a moment, Mayor, I appreciate it. The clerk is checking something.
Hey, Chris, have you checked the, um, the levy cap, the appropriation cap?
No, I, I haven't filled in those worksheets.
Right, so, um, that's, that's why we might need a little time there. That's why I'd like to have it on the first. Just in case we have to make some cuts to get under one of the caps.
One second, guys. Thank you. I appreciate it. Yeah, can, can the clerk hear me? Does that, does six thirty work for you, Lizette? I can't hear you.
I don't know why it's not working.
Oh, now I, I can hear you now.
Okay, I'm just trying to confirm from the governing body, six thirty on April first. That's all I'm asking.
Oh, I thought you said you were gonna be late.
No, no, no.
Okay, they said six thirty, yeah.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. I thought you were saying you were gonna be late. Okay, so six thirty, everyone has their calendar marked. Um, she'll do the special meeting notice. Uh, Lizette, if you could let Councilwoman Sabari know that we are meeting April first at six thirty. I appreciate it.
I will send an email out tomorrow.
Thank you so much. Okay, um, very good. Uh, thank everybody for, um, their input. And, um, Chris, if you, if there's anything you could do to accommodate some, I, I have not asked you to do bar graphs. Um, I, I don't know that our programs have that capability, but, Councilman De Gregorio, what is it that you're requesting of Chris to do for you?
I think that, I mean, if the budget was presentable all in one place in a binder, uh, with, or in one.
We don't have a, uh, we, we don't have a binder. We're dealing with COVID, sir, so if you could just.
Well, the, I mean, the binders really could be put, uh, in the, um, in the front area of, and if they could be picked up by the council.
Councilman De Gregorio. We'll email you. If, if there's something that we could send you by email, it would be greatly appreciated to articulate, just to articulate what it is you are looking for specifically.
Very simple, uh, a simple, easy-to-read, uh, two thousand nineteen actual, two not, two thousand twenty actual, two thousand twenty-one budgeted, and, um, you know, if, you know, for the major expenditures to do a bar graph to see what, what the progression was and how it looks from two thousand nineteen to two thousand, uh, twenty to two thousand, uh, what is proposed in two thousand twenty-one. Uh, bar graphs are very easy to do with Excel.
We don't need the, we don't need the explanation, Councilman De Gregorio, please.
You know what? You don't have to.
Because you know what? I really, I have to tell you something. Ten o'clock at night, it's ten o'clock at night, and everything is here in three columns for you. All you have to do is read it. That's fine, but we don't. Chris?
Can I, can I jump in for a second?
Short of the, short of the bar graphs, I know how hard you've been working on this. Can you give him what, i- i- is it possible? I thought you already did give it to him. I'm looking at the columns, so quite frankly, I'm not understanding what you are reading.
You've been muted about five times.
You are muted because you're interrupting and speaking over people. So you get muted.
No, I wasn't.
Okay, we're trying to solve your problem, which is apparently, even though you, you don't want to be on this committee, even though you don't read anything we give you, you're making work for us to give you more things to not read. So we're just trying to understand what it is that you wanted. Uh, I think the prior year budgets are all online anyway, on a website.
They are.
They're on the website. Uh, yes, you are muted. You keep interrupting us.
Chris, is there, is, is there a, an easy way to do it? I don't want to, I apologize for creating extra work for you. Is, is there?
Well, I guess my, 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 my question is, uh, the, the package that I, that I sent out, the sixteen-page document that I sent out for the last budget meeting, uh, the, the March second budget meeting, the first couple of pages were the summaries, uh, was the summary that I sent out for this one, the first three pages.
Right.
But every page after that, so the next thirteen pages was all of the detail for twenty twenty-one budget, the modifications that were made to the budget, the paid and charged, the balances.
And I sent that, right, you know, I, so I'm confused with what he wants. That's what I'm saying. I, I know, I'm looking at the columns.
Look, guys, he doesn't know what he wants. He just wants to be speaking endlessly this evening, okay? So what I'll ask, I know you can hear me, Mr. De Gregorio, put in an email exactly what you want, and we will find out to you if we can. Thank you. Um, is there any other comments on the budget?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Um, uh, so just for the record, uh, Councilwoman Sabari joined late, uh, left early. And, um, there's something going on Zoom, but.
Yeah, I saw.
Okay.
Chris, can I just, Chris, in the Munidex program, can, I was talking to Carol about it today. In the Munidex program, can you run an, um, a nineteen actual column, twenty actual, and then a twenty-one budget? Is that possible?
Um, yeah, I don't like to butt in here, but what you're describing is the budget document.
We, we gave that, Paul. We, we gave that, that's for.
David, that doesn't help you?
Yeah, look, uh, let, let's not add an hour onto this, uh, meeting by trying to figure out what Mr. De Gregorio wants to not read. So, so with that, can we, uh, can we adjourn it?
So, move.
Have a motion. Thank you. Can I have a second?
You're not gonna give the public another chance?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, uh, we're adjourned. I want to thank, uh, the professionals and, uh, Ms. McMorris for all their good work on the budget and, um.
For the record, I was muted at least ten times this meeting.
Well, that's because you keep speaking over people, so when you learn how not to speak over people, you won't get muted, okay?
Well, Mayor, that's why I said what you.
Thank you. We have business to do. All right, everybody, have a good evening, uh, and for everyone who celebrates Passover, have a great Passover. Take care.